All right. Good evening, everybody. The time is now six o'clock. And I would like to welcome everybody to the regular Galt City Council meeting for Tuesday, November the second of two thousand and twenty-one. Due to the ongoing COVID- nineteen pandemic emergency, we have to conduct on to handle our city council meetings much differently than we usually do. For the protection of the public and our city staff, I'm now going to ask our city manager to give a brief explanation to the public, sir.
Good evening, City Manager Lorenzo Heinz. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference slash video conference in compliance with Assembly Bill three, six, one. Members of the public will see the council members and city staff who are appearing via remote video slash telephone connections. City council meetings will be held virtually by teleconference or video conference until further notice. Today's agenda states that we are also using the Zoom webinar format, which allows the public to provide live public comment. Members of the public may use the link to enter the webinar as attendees. They should also be able to use the raise their hand option and the Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak and should do so when the mayor announces the time for the general public comment or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their mind and do not want to speak. In addition, members of the public may use the call-in feature also described in the agenda. You may just listen if you prefer, but if you would like to speak when the mayor announces the time for public comment, you may do so by pressing star nine at that time. We request, as we do at typical in-person council meetings, that speakers provide their name and address when they are called on to speak, but doing so is not required. Today's agenda also states that residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting. In view of the direct video conference and call-in direct opportunities for public comment just described, email comments will not be read out loud during the meeting, but will be distributed to council, made part of the official minutes and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
All right. Thank you, sir. We'll now call the meeting to order. Tina, can I get a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. If everyone would need to, or please join us in a silent prayer followed by a flag salute, and I would ask each of you, if you can please keep Officer Pre Herrera in your prayers as she recovers from her injuries. Thank you, everybody. Please, everyone, join me in a salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everybody. We'll now move on to our replay statement, Tina.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable fourteen, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, November fifth at nine AM and Saturday, November sixth at nine AM. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com forward slash metro cable fourteen.
All right. Thank you. We'll now move on to item B, agenda approval additions and or deletions. Do I have anything from council? Okay, I myself actually am going to pull items F three, F four, F six, and F seven. And also would ask if we could, the council would consider to table item H two from this meeting to a later meeting. This is the item H two is the resolution for the strategic plan.
Sean, could you read those off in order again, please, so I can mark them on the agenda?
I'm asking to pull F three, F four, F six, and F seven. And asking to table H two. Mr. Heinz, the reason I'm asking to table that and asking the council to do that would be that I was had some concerns regarding this item, and I feel that since it's been six months since we did this, I think I personally need a little bit of a refresher, and I am afraid that this item is going to have a long discussion, and I would rather have more time for it. Would any of the council have a problem with doing that, or do I have any support in tabling that item?
You have my support.
Anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I was supposed to move table this subject to the next meeting or whenever well.
Okay. With that, Mr. Heinz, is that is that going to be an issue? What can you let me know what we can do with that?
No, we'll set up a meeting with the facilitator that we've worked with and work on briefing the council on these strategic goals. And we'll take you from our May twenty-second meeting into the document that's before you right now and show you that everything that you agreed upon on May twenty-second is in the document. All right, and that's all. That's all I have for that.
All right. I appreciate that. So moving on to public comment. Tina, do we have any written public comment this year? Or I'm sorry, do we have any? Since we no longer actually read emails a lot for those of you that are watching, we did receive some emails prior to the to the meeting. Do we have any hands raised online?
We do have some two hands raised online.
Okay.
Joshua Azua. Joshua, go ahead and unmute your mic, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, everyone. I hope everyone's having a good night and have happy holidays and enjoy the time coming in. Bringing up the topic if about bringing having a skate park at Walker Park and just kind of bring up the topic again. Just trying to have more, more, more family oriented, more families together, you know, we start the holidays, so it'd be nice to see no more kids dropping in. So just trying to bring up this topic again, just getting got a skate park. And that's it.
All right. Thank you for your comments, Joshua.
Our next person is Bob Bellier. And go ahead and mute your mic, and you have five minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Farmer, Vice Mayor Sandu, and other members of the city council. You can hear me, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool. As Chair of the Commission on Aging, I would urge the city council to consider allowing the Commission on Aging for the City of Galt to meet in person consistent with COVID- nineteen recommendations, i.e. six feet distance and swearing of masks for the following reasons. One, there's plenty of room in the Shabola Center for the commissioners and few members of the public who attend to observe the aforementioned distance and mask recommendations. Two, the Shabola Center is currently being used for other events such as exercise classes, testing for COVID- nineteen, and so on, where many more people congregate. Why can't the commission of five people and a few senior residents meet in similar ways? Three, many seniors are not sufficiently technically inclined or comfortable participating in Zoom meetings, or their computer is not set up for that platform, or four, seniors prefer to attend meetings in person, at least the ones that I've talked to. Five, the commission prefers in-person meetings because they are more personable and allow its members to be able to read body language and communicate more effectively. Six, several times Zoom has not really worked out that well for our meetings. And seven, why have, why have the city pay for Zoom meetings when we could meet in person at the Shabola Center or a bigger meeting room at Park and Rec and still observe the COVID restrictions? As a citizen, I urge the city council to consider not only allowing the Commission on Aging to meet in person, but to consider meeting in person themselves for the following reasons. One, accommodations should be able to be made for the public to participate in person at the council chambers or virtually from adjacent meeting rooms to take care of the overflow. Two, citizens have a constitutional right to address their elected representatives on matters that concerns them. Restricting their participation by setting up rules that make it difficult for them to participate, participate in public meetings, either technically or physically, runs counter to democratic way of expressing their concerns. In person, in my opinion, is the best way to do that. Three, the constitution and the right of citizens to quote petition their representatives for a redress of grievance is not suspended during emergencies. It is time for our city elect for cities elected representatives to restore public discourse in its proceedings and to push back against those appointed or elected officials inside or outside the city's authority who would continue to limit public participation in a democratic system where those limitations may not necessarily be based on science, but simply on their ability to exercise power for power's sake. I want to emphasize, the council should not take should take all reasonable precautions to keep the public safe, but do not unnecessarily stifle public discourse just because someone appointed or elected inside or outside of our community tells you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bellier, for your comments.
Thank you.
Do we have any additional hands raised?
We have no additional hands raised online.
Okay. All right, then we will. Do we have any comments from staff? I mean, I'm sorry, from council, I mean, from staff. All right, we'll move on to item D presentations. Do we have any presentations this evening?
And this evening.
All right. Move on to item E, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. We will start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Papino.
Yeah, attended last Thursday, the air quality board meeting. It's a pretty short agenda. I would just main thing was a reminder that we are entering the check before you burn season. So go to airquality.org if you have concerns, questions about that. And also, in light of the state's new mandate to eliminate all gas-powered lawn equipment, there's some money, it's not a lot yet. And a partnership between the Air Quality District and S M U D along with Bliss Power Lawn to give some pretty significant rebates for purchase of electric lawnmowers and so forth. So with that coming down the line, we're going to start seeing a lot of, a lot of push and probably a shortage of legally acceptable equipment. So all the information regarding those is again at airquality.org. That's all I have.
Okay, I have a question for you on that. I don't want to discuss this or, you know, the depth, but is there a discussion with that with like the loss of sales tax dollars with the last, you know, with the lack of sales of those types of things? I think that people would go out of state to start buying that stuff and bring it back. Was that discussed at all?
It was not discussed in our meeting as, you know, we are merely subjects of the law. So we didn't really get into any of the pros or cons of it. That, you know, one presumably would think that were discussed at the state level. And I don't know what the prohibition would be on bringing it into the state, but I'm sure that would exist.
Okay, interesting. All right, sir. Councilman Vandenberg.
I did attend the Commission on Aging meeting, and I would agree with Bob. Several of the members had issues communicating during the meeting because of their quality of service, probably that's the best they could afford, and they're doing this out of their pocket. So it is a struggle for them to have a smooth meeting. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano.
Yeah, I attended a CACOG meeting, excuse me, on the twenty-first. And a couple of the topics were pricing and incentives for research design framework. And basically what this is, is a pilot program that CACOG is entering in to to get out ahead of the curve with a couple of other COGS in the state to look at roadway pricing. Essentially, the idea is is that the state is probably going to do away with the gas tax. And at some point, either mandate, most likely, some type of roadway pricing, so user, user fees. It's absolutely crazy, but so the idea is is that we're going to try to get out ahead of it and see what we can do to figure out pricing that works for all the communities and the issue of urban communities was brought up in urban, what what works in, you know, suburban areas doesn't necessarily work in urban, and so that's a huge point of concern, but but also that's going to be a part of the pilot is taking a look at that as well. So, you know, unfortunately, I was having a conversation with a citizen today about state mandates, and we talk about it all the time here, but here's one yet that's going to be coming, probably coming our way. But fortunately, CACOG is getting out, trying to get out in front of it and and figure out the best way to to attack it. And then we heard a conversation or a presentation about next generation transit strategy and so folks up in the Seattle, Washington area, we're talking about how they do this really hefty bus service. Doesn't necessarily work in our region, but but some of the concepts were interesting where there were so many routes going all the time that there was, it was faster to get wherever people needed to get mostly from outer areas into downtowns without it was faster to use the bus service up there than it was to use a vehicle. And so so anyhow, but the one of the thoughts that were brought up there was, okay, so why are we pushing people out of, out of their own cars to to use public transit and the council member from Lincoln brought that up, and it was pretty, pretty hefty conversation, but it was, it was quality. Councilman Vandenberg, did you have a question for me?
Yeah, I was curious, the the gas taxes, that's just a way to transition from gallons of taxes based on gallons to road tax. So the people that are buying the electric cars and I'll start footing the bill as well.
That, that, that's, that's my obvious. The dots, yeah. You know, we, Councilman Papino just talked about how, you know, they're, they're, they're outlawing gas, the gas, everything, right? And so yeah, no, I agree. I think that's what it's, I think that's what's happening. But again, one of the things about CACOG and CACOG staff is that they're pretty progressive in terms of getting out in front of things. And so this will be a good little pilot to to figure out and answer some of those questions before things get dictated to to us. So and that's pretty much it. We skipped the advocacy update just for time and and that's it.
That's interesting that I think that's very fascinating. And you said, you said urban versus suburban, but I think you meant rural, right? Rural versus urban, like people that live, you know, out in the middle of nowhere. Obviously, if they were traveling more miles, the tax would be more. And they're trying to figure out that's fair. I mean, that's the idea, right? I mean, that's the problem they're trying to figure out.
The problem that what they're trying to figure out is is it a vehicle miles traveled issue is different from for us than it would be for somebody who lives in, you know, South Sacramento or Roseville or somewhere like that. And and you can't just put a one-size-fits-all approach to it because those who live in Plaisterville was the, the city that was used. Most of their, their residents commute in at least south somewhere, whether it's Roseville or or all the way in and Folsom. And so that's one of the things they're trying to attack is is what's, what's that going to look like? And how do we get out in front of it?
All right. Well, thank you for that report, sir. I'm sure that's going to be an interesting topic moving forward, reading some about it. So I myself attended a Youth Commission meeting last night. We discussed some of our upcoming projects and which there are several and discussed our upcoming participation in some city events and kind of appropriated some, find some people to some subcommittees and and in charge of a few things. So it was, it was a good meeting. And now this isn't a committee, but I know several of us attended the the swearing-in ceremony at the PD was very nice, and it was nice to welcome those new officers and the promotion of some of their staff and also the official swearing-in of our new police chief. So thank you for those of you that were able to attend with me, and that was good. So that's all I have on that. And with that, we will move on to item F, our consent calendar. It is recommended that items one, two, one, two, five, and one, two, and five. One, two, and five be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and or action is requested. These items are number one, the minutes of the regular meeting of October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Item two is receiving file warrants for the period ending October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Item five is the solid waste ordinance, second reading and adoption. Do I have a motion? Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu.
Second.
Hey, if you could just open public comment, please.
Thank you, sir, for reminding me of that. Do you have any public comment on these items, Tina? Any hands raised?
We have no hands raised online.
All right. If you want to make a public comment on these items, we're going to allow you about a minute here to jump on. You can use the Zoom link to raise your hand, or you can press, I believe, it's star six to raise your hand if you are on the phone. So again, if you're wanting to make a comment on this item, items one, two, or five on a consent calendar, please do so now. All right. Do we have any hands raised?
We have no hands raised.
Okay. All right, we will move on. I will entertain the motion to approve items one, two, and five.
Move.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
I.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
I.
Councilmember Lozano.
I.
Mayor Farmer.
I. Items approved five, zero. We'll now move on to the item which I pulled, item F three, which is the AB three sixty-one resolution, making findings necessary to continue and conduct Brown Act meetings via teleconference. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We have no hands raised.
Okay, reminder, if you'd like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. The reason I pulled this item is because I I felt that since this was regarding the, the reason for this resolution was for us to continue meeting remotely. And we will have to renew this every thirty days, is my understanding, to continue doing that. We are operating under that now, but I thought it would be a good item instead of the COVID update to bring this up and see if, in fact, the council is still interested in continuing with, with Zoom meetings. I know there's been the discussion from time to time, and we had some public comments regarding that. You know, I personally understand there's been some reasons why we haven't done that the past or recently, we went to one meeting and then we went back. I just, I've been thinking about it, and I personally, I do feel that there's a big difference between meeting live and on Zoom. I I feel like we've done, you know, taken measures to allow people to make comment and and have their, you know, exercise that right to do that. But on the other hand, too, I know that is, you know, it is technically challenging for some people, and it and honestly, I I struggle with it because, you know, our kids are in school and, you know, all of their boards are meeting in some form of ladder hybrid or some form, our school boards and our high school board, and even our board of supervisors. And so I I just feel frankly that if our kids are in school in person, that why can't us, the city leaders and staff meet and do city business? So this is why I brought this up to see if there's any thoughts. Any council have any thoughts on this? Want to weigh in on either way, opinions? Councilman Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I I would entertain it. I understand people have concerns about masks. At this Cal Cities, you know, someone was wearing kind of a shield that just goes, you put on your nose and covers over it. So with the mask, I think it would be hard to hear us, it'd be a lot of too much mumbly peg, you know, I think that's how I would sound anyway. So the, the, those shields provide kind of the compromise between being able to be heard and still providing some of the protections the county wants, even though every study that uses a control group shows that masks do not prevent the spread of viruses. It's I understand the county is, that's the rule in place. So maybe if the, the other council members were willing to take that step, we could meet halfway and have live meetings.
Anybody else have any thoughts? Vice Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of comment. You know, that's same thing. I believe I mentioned many times. I feel much comfortable as a personal meeting on, as compared to the Zoom meeting. And there is a lot of committee member also saying things asking like Bob Baller to he make his public comment today. You know, I know the other hand, we really need to be take care of our health or the other people's health or children's health. But I will ask, you know, Mr. Heinz, if we go back to the live meeting, what kind thing we respecting us if there is something nothing to stand, we should go back to the live meeting. Mr. Heinz.
I'm, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, can you repeat that again?
I'm asking you, if we go, for example, bit back to live meeting, what, what the county say, what's the, you know, what kind of thing we have to follow or just recommend it?
If we have live meetings as they are in the surrounding jurisdictions, if we have live meetings, then it's required that everybody in the room has to wear a mask.
Okay, and there is some school board meeting. I, I don't know, I did hear there's some.
Oh, yeah. And I was, I presented the Galt Market Visionary Plan to the elementary school board last Wednesday. And yes, that school board, that body is meeting in person, but every member on that day has had a mask on.
Okay, but this is kind of mask on is recommended or kind of another word I, I don't want to say is dictate.
It is a requirement from the county and the state.
Okay, and then these boards, they are not wearing masks. So the county or state, they're taking any action?
They can. It depends on how defiant we appear to be. You see, the thing is, I understand it's, it's okay to push back, but there are measures that they can take to bring us back into compliance. All of the COVID dollars and all the ARPA dollars that we've received could possibly be in jeopardy if someone is wishing to bring us back in line. And that's six million dollars plus. And so those are the things that I worry about losing if we step out of line. Losing if we step out of line too far. But I got an email the other day where someone essentially said that I am against live meetings. I've spent all of my career in live meetings except for the last year. And so I don't have any issue with live meetings. The only, the only concern I have is we can do live meetings, but I'm worried about making sure we adhere to the county's regulations. That's all.
Then, then my next question is, what would the hybrid meeting?
The hybrid meeting is essentially, we have some people in the chamber, we have some people participating remotely. One of the cities that I'm aware of here in South County, the count, the council is in the chamber masked up. The staff is, is participating remotely. And so there's an example of a hybrid meeting right there, or you've got some council members in the chamber and some members participating remotely. So it's all in how we want to set it up, but all the folks that are inside the facility are masked up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Heinz.
Sure, my pleasure, sir.
Um, I was gonna speak, but I think, um, I'm gonna let Councilman Papano go because he hasn't spoken yet. So go ahead, sir. Yeah, first, in ten years of being on the dais, yeah, absolutely. I prefer to be in person and I think it's hands down the best way to do it. However, having also been in our chambers, when it's just an average city council meeting, the six foot spacing and so forth goes out the window. There's, there's, it's not feasible for us the way it is, say, in the county board supervisors' chambers. That's a, an enormous auditorium. And I echo what the city manager said. I feel that we have a gun to our head with what we stand to get punished with. If somebody at the county or state level wants to for us to define their mandate. So as much as I would love to be in the, have all of our council meetings and commission meetings in person. I think our efforts and the efforts of those petitioning us to allow and go back to live meetings need to be directed toward the county health officer, county board supervisors, and on up at the state level. And I think that's kind of exactly what we heard at the school board meeting last Wednesday. That they intend to direct all of their petitions in their case against the vaccine mandate toward the appropriate people that are actually putting these in place. But I see that we're kind of over a barrel and we're poking the bear as it would be if we try to override or go against them, against those mandates when we do have things they can do to us. That's all. Your thoughts, sir? Councilman Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say that people on the school board, some are not wearing masks. People, representatives, county representatives, some of them are not wearing masks during meetings. So, you know, you can't just say that blankly that everyone is. It's not true. But it's also why I brought up the shield. I think it's a compromise between a mask and not being heard or understood clearly and providing the protection the county wants. I would also say that the one meeting we did have, Councilman Papano was not there. We do have Plexiglas shields in between the chairs, which provides a higher level of protection than perhaps other chambers. That's all I have.
I was thinking about the comments that were made and, and Councilman Papano's comments too. And I was taking some notes here, you know, I, I do, you realize that in schools, they're not six feet apart. They are wearing, they are required to wear masks. But they're not six feet apart. So I don't, I don't see them instituting that. I think, you know, and I think I, I did ask the city manager today, we had a discussion today, just for the rest of the council to know about the chamber retrofit. And I asked, you know, why we had spent the money to retrofit. I know that was not done under Mr. Heinz and he stated that. But it was my understanding at the time that the Plexiglas shields and the rearranging of the seating to put the staff down the front table and, and to spread out the council was for the purpose of social distancing. I believe, I mean, I can't say a hundred percent, but I would be pretty confident that if we were to measure the seating, I believe we are probably six feet apart based on the seating that it's set up now. Could be a little less, but again, the schools don't seem to be following that. But I, I don't, I do understand the mask thing. I wanted to make a comment. Was interesting. I actually started watching the superintendent, the county, county board of supervisors meeting that was on today was on for several hours. I started watching this afternoon prior to our council meeting and it was interesting what came up was, and, and again, actually Supervisor Frost was not wearing a mask. So if we're talking about our county leaders, you know, exercising what we are mandated to do, but she specifically asked that if the ARPA funding was contingent upon vaccination mandates or mask mandates, and she was told no. So it would be interesting that they would hold that over our head as they're going to withhold funds if that specific question was asked and the answer was given to her, no, at the, at the, at the county level. So be that it is May, you know, I'm, I'm gonna be frank, I, I'm not a big fan of wearing a mask in the meeting, because I think it'd be hard to speak and stuff, but I do understand there's several boards like Mr. Valley and, and not only them, but other boards that have really been kind of asking me when they can go back. I feel like there's a real difference. I mean, I don't want to dive into my personal opinions on this and make this a big debate, but I, I personally would be willing to make that sacrifice and meet live so that our boards that chose to do that could go back. So that's my feeling on it. Council of Vandenberg?
I'd second that.
Councilman Lozano, you have any thoughts? You haven't spoken yet.
I always have thoughts. I, I, I think it's an interesting conversation. A, a couple, one thing that hasn't come up yet is the city's responsibility for the employees of the city. And, and you know, we have we have, we have a responsibility to, to the, the staff, including Mr. Heinz. And so uh, my, my question would be, and I don't, whoever can answer it, can answer it, but what are the, the most recent state mandate, state health, I'm sorry, employee health mandates related to, to this?
So we are under, uh, thank you, council member. We are under the auspices of Stephanie and Frank, can you help me out here? I forget the name of the organization, but they are in charge of workplace.
So we're still, we're still governed by the Cal OSHA rules. Uh, but in addition to that, we do have to abide by the Sacramento County rules. And so if you're having an in-person meeting, whether you're vaccinated or not vaccinated, you do have to wear a mask.
Face covering is what it's specified as.
Yeah, most people wear a mask. Uh, we do have some employees that will wear one of those shields. So we do see that.
Um, I assume that OSHA pertains to everybody, including our county staff. I would assume that also the staff of the school districts as well. I know that, I know school districts are their own thing, but they are operating in that county. So I would assume that, you know, the mask precaution that they're taking is obviously, I, I, I want to say that I just, just to be clear on Rich's comments, is I don't, I don't, I don't think it's just because we want to go back to live meetings and, and we'd be willing to wear masks to do that, that we're, you know, somehow have no regard for our staff. I, I want to emphasize that there was a mention, there was a word that Mr. Heinz used before when we went back to Zoom and he said, you know, it was the optics of it and setting an example. And I didn't disagree, I understood that. I, I understood your, your comments, Mr. Heinz, on that. But I think for me, looking at it now, I think the example we're sitting now is the wrong one. I think the example I'm seeing is that I'm saying to people that it's okay if your children go to school and sit under six feet apart from each other, as long as they wear a mask. But our lives are more important than theirs because we can't meet live and our staff is somehow more important than those. And so that's my feeling on it. So people can look at their own way, but that's the way I look at it. And that's why I've kind of changed my perception of this right now. Mr. Lozano?
Yeah, to be really, really crystal clear, I did not say that I, we had any other obligations to our employees than what was outside of what the state required. My, my, I, I just ask a question. And the question was, what, what OSHA responsibilities do we have? I, I made no judgment about anything. And so Mayor, when you said that we, I suggested that others had no regard for staff, that is not what I said. And I want to make that really clear, because I just ask a question. And I, I would love to meet in person. I like, uh, Councilman Papano have been meeting in person on boards and commissions for many years and it is much more effective and I, I like it. I, I, I am hesitant though, because, you know, it's, it's i- it's more than just meeting in person. And, and so, you know, like you said, I, I, I would love to and, but I, but I think that we have a responsibility to, to be good stewards of the money that's coming in and, and that is, that is a real possibility that, that that money could go away.
Well, and I'm not, and, and at first I apologize, I did not mean that that's what you meant. I, I maybe phrased it in a way that may.
Yeah, that's what, that's what you said and that's how I took it.
Well, I'm sorry, sir. That's not what I intended. I know that's not what you were meaning. You were just bringing up the point. Councilman Vandenberg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, you just stated, Mayor Farmer just stated that Sue Frost inquired directly about funding and it was not tied together. So that is off the table, which is actually very good news. That's did I hear the mayor incorrectly?
Well, I, this, this is what I heard today, but I think, I think that we should definitely reach out for clarity. I mean, I'm just saying what I heard today.
I think that's, that's a very important point.
It's not their money. It's the state's money. So unless she's hearing it from the state controller or somebody from the Newsome administration, it's not their money. It's the county's money right now because they're in possession of it, but it belongs to the state. And the state issued, actually they doubled down on face covering uh, back on October twentieth. And the joint statement was issued by the California Health and Human Services Agency Secretary and the State Department of Health Secretary, basically reaffirming the mask mandate here in the state. So while I understand the county believes that, or Ms. Frost believes that, and or ask the question if any of these, any of these dollars is at stake, that's fine uh, to get that, that answer at the county level, but those funds emanated from the state. And so the state can't take those dollars back. All it takes is an invoice from the state controller and those dollars are going back. So while the county believes it has oversight of those funds, they are still state funds. I just wanted to make sure no one walked away from this conversation with a false sense of security.
As you should.
Yeah, understood. Uh, like I said, it was just the staffer that was giving the report on the, uh, ARPA funds. And it was, uh, that was, that was what came up in the discussion. So it seemed unlikely that their staff member would comment on something and give false, you know, but I think obviously we, you know, we would need to reach out. And, and I understand, uh, my problem is it seems like there's always going to be some, some kind of carrot holding over your head, no matter what it is. And, and, you know, I'm not going to dive into that, my personal feelings, but it's anyways. Somebody have their hand up or no?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I just have, I just want to be clarification from Mr. Heinz. According to the Sacramento County, they said you can do in-person meeting, but you have to wear a mask. Is that correct or wrong?
That is correct. Uh, the distancing requirement isn't there either. The requirement is mask.
Right. And then my next question is, what would we follow the county guideline or we follow the state guideline? But if, if we have a personal meeting and we, everybody agreed to wearing mask, are we taking risk if we follow their direction then?
Vice Mayor, that's the perfect scenario. We'll have, we can have a live meeting if everybody's wearing masks. I can guarantee you the staff and I will be wearing masks. Because, uh, because we're required to. Now, if, if all five members are willing to mask up, then there's no issue. We can have a live meeting at the next meeting.
And my other question is, if we do the hybrid meeting, like in some maybe mayor or whoever want to be in chamber and somebody want to be from the U meeting, how far we are in the process is very easy to do it or is, is hard?
No, I think we can do it. I'll, I'll speak with my IT folks. I think we, we can manage that meeting. It's just whether or not the folks in the chamber are willing to demonstrate an adherence to the county's requirements.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so like the high school, I think is the, or I, I believe at least elementary that I watched the other night, they're the ones that do a hybrid where I think they, they have their tablet. They're still on Zoom. Um, they were all there, but I believe it might be the high school that has one person that still comes in remotely. I, I would have to, can't remember, but, um, anyways. So, uh, if that answered your question, Vice Mayor. So I, I mean, again, I brought this discussion up to see, you know, kind of what everybody's feelings are. Um, Councilman Lozano, you have your hand up? Again, go ahead.
Yeah, just real quick. Um, so my, I, I think it's a healthy discussion. I think it's a good discussion. We haven't had it publicly in a while about, about our, our public meetings. Um, my question is this, and something to ponder as we, as we get clarification from the county and as we move toward it live meetings, who are we, the five of us? Who are we going to identify as the per, person or persons uh, responsible for ensuring that folks that come in are adhering to the mask policy? And, and so I just asked that question because if, if we're going to go down that road, and I, I think it's one that we should, it's going to be very uncomfortable wearing a mask for, for several hours, but well, I'm, I'm willing to do it. But who are we going to put in charge of ensuring that the public who has access coming in can do that, um, to, to ensure that they're, that they're abiding by the, the policy?
Mr. Heinz?
I think Councilmember Vandenberg had his hand up.
Well, I, I thought maybe you wanted to, uh, address Councilman Lozano's question first, or you wanted to let Jason?
Uh, is that okay, Councilmember Vandenberg? Okay. Uh, we'll have to figure that out. Uh, Councilmember Lozano, um, clearly someone's got to be posted at the door. And basically reminding folks that, that if you enter the chamber, you have to be wearing a mask. Um, inevitably, there's going to be somebody or some bodies that are not going to want to adhere to that. And so, um, they may have to deal with the Gulf PD in that, in that case.
Here, here is why I say that, and I'm sorry, Councilman Vandenberg. But, but the question I asked, uh, the reason I asked that question is twofold. One, we really need to identify somebody. But secondly, I don't, I, I truly do not believe that it is a police officer's obligation under, under their constitution that they swore to protect to enforce a mask policy. I, I, I fundamentally believe that's wrong. I think it's a bad position to put our officers in. But if we can find somebody on staff or somebody other than somebody in a uniform,
Uh, but if we can find somebody on staff or somebody other than somebody in a uniform um, who is supposed to be enforcing, um, you know, criminal law, um, I, that's, that would be my druthers.
And, and so Councilmember, I, I, I definitely understand and we would, uh, we would, uh, we would look for a non-uniformed person to monitor the door at the council meeting. And, but inevitably someone's going to have an issue with this. There are instances of this that are on the news every night. And in that particular case where my staff is threatened with bodily harm or verbal abuse, that's when we call in the Gulp PD.
Councilman Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think if we all speak at one voice, if someone's going to, you know, come in the chambers without a mask on and we all speak clearly with one voice, I, I think that would go a long ways to mitigate the problem. Uh, and these are all good conversations. At what point if and can we make a vote on what we're going to do? But I believe Mr. Papino has something to say as well.
Councilman Papino, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just say that I've been watching the school board meetings and frankly, we're kidding ourselves if we think that the general public that's upset about these items is going to put a mask on and come in and, uh, city manager was there in person. Um, and there's, there's no masks being worn in the crowd. And I think if we, if we go to an open meeting, you're just going to have to understand that basically the Walmart rules apply. And people are going to be walking in without them and you're asking for a fight. So again, they're not going to care what we say. And we're, we're comparing ourselves to those, those meetings and I'm just saying that's what's going on. So we got to be prepared to allow that to be unenforced.
Well, with that being said, would, would pose the question, and maybe this is a legal question that, um, maybe Frank can weigh in on, but um, I'm sure that the school district is posting, you know, masks required in the chambers, et cetera, et cetera. But like, um, Kevin said, you know, I saw the meeting is, you know, I was watching it too and there's, you know, probably seventy-five or more percent of people were not. Um, where does the legal liability stand? I mean, let me, let me ask a different question. If someone comes into a city facility right now and there's a, there's a, there's a sign on the door that says mask is, is required and someone walks into that city facility, let's say it's the, I don't know, finance department or parks or rec, whatever. Are those persons kicked out or are they just, are we just posting that you're supposed to wear that blah, blah, blah? Because if we're not, then I think we've answered our own question, uh, about the council chambers. I, I, just, I feel like, you know, I feel like legally if we're saying this is what should be done and this is what you should be doing, then I think that what, how could we be legally liable? I, I don't know. I don't know who can comment on that. Frank, I mean, do you have any thoughts? You're on mute.
I'll let Mr. Heinz, I'll let, uh, Mr. Heinz respond to what happens with people that are in the public that come in and then I'll, and then I'll, I'm happy to discuss just the general liability issues.
Um, the few times that I've seen individuals enter City Hall, they usually, they're usually in masks. And usually they're headed to the finance department. And we make it clear through all the signage on the way to the finance department that masks are required. Um, everyone that I ran into in City Hall today was wearing a mask. Now, the dynamics are different at a legislative body meeting, as you saw at the school board. Um, so I think the road that I think Councilmember Papinow's comments are probably more the rule than the exception.
And then I'll, I'll just add that, um, just from a general framework, uh, um, there are two competing, um, uh, live risks, or I would just call them risk issues. One is obviously the potential, um, withholding of a carrot from a state or county body for, um, shirking mask rules. I think that is mitigated if the city is in good faith trying to get compliance with people that are coming into chambers and ultimately, um, you know, eh, the extent of efficacy of that effort is going to be maybe with mixed results, but I think signage and, and education and asking people to take it, you know, put the mask on. I think that could mitigate that risk. The, but the other issue is, and this kind of goes back to what Councilmember Lovano brought up earlier is, um, you, the chambers are considered a workplace for Cal OSHA purposes. So even though the council members themselves are not in the city employees, the workplace, it's, the workplace itself is also applies to the chambers. And so you do pose, you know, the, the good faith effort won't go as far in mitigating Cal OSHA risk as it would maybe mitigating, you know, somebody from the county or state kind of, um, you know, swapping the hand of the city. Because if somebody gets injured or hurt or, or claims that they got COVID and got seriously sick because of the meeting, you know, good intentions won't, and, and a good faith won't necessarily mitigate that level of, of risk from a Cal OSHA perspective. So, um, that's probably the best I could say, uh, just generally.
And Stephanie, uh, if you're there, um, can you give us some idea of some of the Cal OSHA fines that have been levied?
It's been quite a few months since I looked at it, but kind of early on, it, I think one of the larger fines was over thirty thousand dollars. Um, and I think that was due to certain employees at the state not, um, complying with some of the Cal OSHA rules.
Understood.
I, I think, uh, just a second, I'm sorry, Councilman Vandenberg, I think that, um, it's good to know those things, Frank and, uh, Stephanie. Um, but I also, I think it's due to, we're looking at two different things. I think it's one thing for us to be negligent and, and our staff not be complying. It's another thing to be and, and also be, um, uh, you know, good stewards of what we're being told to do by putting the proper signage and, and everything. But as we can see with the school boards and stuff when it comes to the public, I mean, you know, you can't control, I mean, I guess you, you could try, but it doesn't seem like, I'm just wondering if lawsuits are such a thing, then how come we're not seeing all this happen at other different levels? Because I'm seeing elected bodies have people. Um, no, the thing we got to remember too is, look, I mean, let's be honest. Like, we're probably looking at maybe five or six people in a council meeting on average. We might get, you know, twenty or thirty at something that's really controversial, but typically we're not looking at that many people that come to our council meetings. I mean, the one live meeting we had recently, we had two people in the audience and they were only there because they were giving a, a presentation. So we had r- really no spectators at all. So I, I mean, although it, you know, one person is an issue, I get that, but at the same time, I, I don't, I don't think, you know, I know Mr. Heinz hasn't been here long enough to know what live council meetings look like on typical in Galt, but you know, we're usually not seeing people like piling in like sardines. Um, just a thought, Councilman Vandenberg, go ahead.
Yes, I, I'm curious if, uh, Chief Kolonowski has any input or, uh, thoughts on the matter.
Well, I would tell you that I agree with the comments related to the police department getting caught up in the enforcement of the mask mandate. And it is accurate, however, though, that if we are not the door monitors and we have to come in when there's an issue either declared by the parliament, that, you know, the person running the meeting, in this case, the mayor or the city manager, we're going to be responsive to their request. And I would say from a police department perspective, I'm leery about taking withdrawals out of the goodwill bank um, when they're not absolutely necessary. So, um, those are, those are really just my thoughts on that.
Well, just for the record, I totally agree with that comment, uh, as far as the police officer's role and, and Councilman Lozano, I, I firmly believe, and I think some of us, others probably think the same way, that we don't feel like it's the position we want to put our police department in. Um, I, I adamantly believe that as well. Um, but, uh, but again, I, I personally feel like, I think, you know, honestly, I think we're overthinking this because we're talking about a lot of what ifs, but um, I think if we're doing our diligence and, uh, the city is abiding by, uh, what is required and what frankly, everybody else is doing. I mean, what, what, look, I think there's other, there's other councils that are meeting in a hybrid mode. They're still letting public, what are they, what are they doing? They put their signs up? I- is every person in the, in the spectators wearing a mask? I doubt that that's the truth. So what's happening there? I mean, we're not the only one talking about this. Other people meeting, so. I mean, it's not like we're setting the example here. I don't, I don't know. I mean, like I said, I personally, you know, I'm not a fan of wearing a mask in, in the meeting because I feel like it's going to be tough, um, to speak, but, um, I feel like, you know, we've spent some money on the council chambers to retrofit. I think we've, uh, gone above and beyond what maybe some other councils. I know the school board doesn't meet with plexi between them and they don't, that, you know, they're all wearing masks. I get that, but they're also, you know, we would in fact be doing that and have our distancing and have, you know, the school board is not sitting six feet apart. I can tell you they're like two feet apart if that. So I feel like as far as setting an example about following protocols, I feel that we would be setting the highest example with the retrofit of our chambers, um, the compliance of our staff, um, city council and the posting of the appropriate measures for spectators. So again, I know this has to be something we all, you know, we all have our opinions, but I, if, if it's, if it's the will of this body to continue on Zoom, then, uh, the, if it's the will of the majority of this body to continue on Zoom, then, then I guess that's what we're going to do. But if it's the will to go back to live meetings, then we need to say that. And I for one am saying that I would rather transition back to live meeting. So if no one agree, if no one feels the same as I do, we can move on past the subject.
Mr. Mayor, what I would recommend is that you adopt this resolution tonight and give yourself the flexibility to either continue Zoom or go back live. Um, because if we don't reaffirm this reso and Mr. Splendario, correct me if I'm wrong, um, then we lose the right to do the remote meetings. I may have that incorrect, uh, but Frank will, will correct me.
Yeah, no, that's right. Basically the reso, um, the previous reso, the AB three six one reso, the council approved at the last meeting. Uh, it, or the one, first one in October, it, that'll expire on its own terms on November fifth. So after November fifth, the council will have to have a live meeting if it chooses not to, um, approve this reso on the consent calendar tonight. And if it does approve it, then it can continue to meet, uh, remotely, um.
But there's, there's no, there's nothing that prohibits us from going to live if, if we ex, if we approve that reso, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So you have flexibility.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't have a problem with that. I understand that it doesn't keep us from doing either. It's just puts it in place. I, I, and again, I didn't pull this to, to actually, uh, you know, say I was against, I was just simply, this is, you know, the parameters of approving this is one of the bases is that this, this board has decided that, you know, circumstances exist that we need to continue meeting live and that's why we're approving this. I don't have a problem with approving it, to be honest with you, but I wanted to have that discussion about whether or not we still believe that circumstances exist that we cannot do that. So that's, so Councilman Vandenberg?
Sorry, thank you. Uh, so it seems to me we have three questions that I'd, I'd like to see answered. One, are we going to approve this? Two, are we all willing to wear a mask? And three, are we willing to go or do we want to go back to live meetings? Is there a, a, a required order? We take those in or how could we handle that, uh, per rule?
Mr. Mayor?
Right, go ahead, sorry.
Um, what I would recommend is that we pass or approve the reso tonight. And that you let the staff and I bring back an action item to council. And we'll bring it to the next council meeting, um, where we have analyzed the pros and cons of going back live or staying on Zoom. It's a very similar approach that we took back in April when this issue came up before. And that way you'll have analytical proof or evidence, but you have new information because the last information we had was from April. And now the rules in the world have morphed just a little bit. And so we can prevent, we can present better information to the council regarding, um, Cal OSHA and their rules, the county and their rules. Um, and so if we bring that back as an action item, we can have the discussion and we can answer Councilmember Vandenberg's questions and as, as well as all the other members' questions and, um, the council can decide at that point in time.
I really don't think we need to rehash. I don't see that much changing. I, I personally would prefer to vote on all the three things I mentioned. However, that procedure go.
Well, the thing is, this item is only for the passage of the resolution. The action item of going back to live meetings, it's not part of this action.
Okay, that's why I asked. Thank you for the clarification. I, I see your point.
Okay.
Well,
Yeah, I mean, it all, it all, it it only is, I would say, to the extent the council decides to, it can make the decision by, it can make the decision directly by not passing the resolution because that will force the council to go to live meetings. So it is on the table in that sense. But, but as far as, as far as the other way that it was described, yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not, um, on, if it helps him chooses to adopt the resolution, it's not on the table. It's also have discussion about do we want to go back to live meetings or not? Regardless, so it's, it's right now, it's, the decision is at the nexus as far as approve or deny the resolution. But, uh, a decision or action, um, on top of that, outside of that resolution is, is not agendaized.
So then, so that council members willing to go to a meeting with a mask? That's the question that needs to be answered then.
Well, I'll make this real simple so we can just finish the subject here. Um, I'll break this in two pieces. I'll be looking for a motion in a minute to go ahead and approve AB three sixty-one because I said I would do that regardless of what we decide. But I, um, I know we're not voting, but I would, um, ask if two of my fellow council members are willing to join me in giving direction that we return to live meetings, I would, I would be willing to wait till this, the one month from now on the second of December that allows uh, us to do one more Zoom and allow a staff time to put in place protocols, answer questions, reach out to county, whatever guy do. But look, I think you guys can figure it out. I mean, honestly, we've already did it once. We went back. It's not going to be a big deal. Let's just get it done. That's my feeling. If nobody wants to join me, then this, this direction will just die now. Um, so is anybody?
I understand, Mayor, but this, this item that you're bringing up hasn't been agendized.
It doesn't need to be agendized to give you direction, sir. Correct, am I, am I incorrect in that?
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah, generally, generally direction for staff to look into something and report back. Yeah, that, that doesn't need to be agendized. Council is always free to give direction related to an item. But it's got to be direction, not, um, not action. And the action here would be, you know, can I have two of my other council members join me with basically, uh, to bring back to go live meetings in December. And so that's, um, that rises to a level of an action, not just direction for staff to look into something and report back at a future meeting.
So to clarify, this would have to be agendized for us to actually, for us to, for the majority of this body to say that we want to go back to live meetings. It has to actually be an agendized action item.
Incorrect.
Correct.
If we do not approve this, we go live.
Correct. Both of those things are actually true. What Councilmember Vandenberg said is, that is true. The decision can be made by not deciding, voting for the resolution. But if the resolution is passed, a separate decision cannot be made by a majority of the council to go back to live meetings in December or whenever else.
And we give up our ability to conduct Zoom meetings forevermore?
No. We just have to bring it up as a vote.
No, as long as, as long as those, uh, social distancing measures are in place in the county, the city can go back to it uh, at any time.
When you say go back to it, what do you mean? Which is what?
So they can, they, tell the conference meetings the way we're doing now.
Okay.
The only, Frank, the only requirement is that we vote on it before we have a Zoom meeting clarifying that we want to follow those new rules, correct?
Correct.
I would just suggest that we, this item was agendized as whether we're going to pass this resolution. The general public was not informed that we were going to be having a discussion as to whether we would be going back live in, in-person meetings. So I would suggest we agendize it for the next meeting so that the public can properly have their input, which is really the crux of this whole discussion anyway and this whole, uh, controversy. So that's, you know, my two cents, I think we should bring it back and we can, uh, have full information and make an informed decision at the next meeting. So it looks like our choices here is either not approve this resolution, uh, well, vote on the resolution and, and see body, if the majority feels approves it or not, or, or, uh, give direction to agendize uh, live meetings on the next November meeting a- as an action item to go back to live meetings. Am I am I clear in understanding those are really kind of our two options here?
Yes, Mayor.
Council Chief Kalanowski.
I just wanted to say that the opportunity to come back at the next council meeting would afford me the ability to talk to Cal chiefs and reach out to other chiefs about that enforcement piece that was raised earlier through some folks on this discussion. And so I would just ask being a new chief and I'd be given just a little leash to do that because I'm not that plugged into this issue statewide. And that would give me some comfort not putting the officers in a position that we'd be problematic going forward. Thank you.
Councilman Lozano.
I would agree. I think our two choices, we can do both, I believe, but I I would agree. I think we need to, we probably should agendize it and and give the public a a proper opportunity to to weigh in as well.
Okay, well, to not drag this on any further, I would like to ask if two of my fellow council members would join me in direction to agendize this item on the next meeting in November. Do I have two other people?
Yes.
I will support that.
Okay. All right. I think we're clear on that then. Any questions, Mr. Heinz, before I move on to this resolution here for this?
No question.
All right. I'll be looking for a motion to approve item F three, AB three sixty one resolution, making findings necessary to continue to conduct Brown Act meetings via teleconference. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papano.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye, resolution approved five zero. Moving on to item F four, I'm sorry, do we have any, I think I asked for public comment on this.
No public comment, no hands raised online.
Okay. All right. All right, moving on to item F four. I I know we had a a council member ask a question about this and it was emailed to us and so that that's actually the question that actually sparked me to have my own thought on it and I didn't get that email till late. So I apologize for that. But it was, I think there was a question of whether or not this was, I don't know if the word approved was used, but if this was presented to the Measure R Committee and their response was no, and then it was clarified that the Measure R Committee does not approve such things. They only review them after the fact. And so again, we're always talking about this Measure R thing. I I just, you know, I just feel like at some point, like I feel like the word oversight committee is not even appropriate because oversight, you know, technically means supervised. You know, it means oversight, like you have some, it's not just like come and review afterwards, but yet that's the language that it says. I just feel and and I know that they have no policymaking power, like they can say yes or no to it. But I just feel like, I and this is just my personal feeling, I just feel like out of respect to the Oversight Committee and to respect to the to the to the to the the intent of what that committee was supposed to represent when this got passed and any future Oversight Committee, I felt like it would just be a better practice, and this is me, to present such things that have to do with Measure R, especially things that are new like this, to just kind of be, you know, presented like, yeah, we present, we show it to Measure R and now it's here before the council. I know that they don't have the the, you know, the say and to say no to it, but I just, I just feel like we're just completely disrespecting it at some point where they're just like, no, we don't show them anything. Because it's like, why are they even there then? I mean, I I mean, review purposes, I get it, but even the review purposes, I've been told that they don't even, I don't know, this is just an ongoing wound in my opinion. But this is why I wanted to pull this, just just for that simple statement. Councilmember, I don't know which one of you had your hands up first. I'll go with Councilman Lozano. Go ahead, Councilman Vandenberg.
That was fine. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that this often looks like you're kind of dipping into the candy jar and I don't think people, that's not the intent. I think it has a tendency to look that way. I think Measure R, and I brought this up in the past when we had the big kerfuffle about the whole issue, but you know, and I would, I think Measure R is exceeding its original intent. The percentage used for the original budget of oh eight, I believe, is an ever diminishing return for what it was intended for for the public. I think Measure R, and I believe if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Splendario, I believe we have the authority to amend it, but I would prefer to see that percent, that budget number switched to a percentage so that it can grow with future budgets in a in a in a normal manner instead of it, because every year our budget goes up and every year that amount stays the same. So it's really being restricted on what it can enforce. And I think it would also help us if we reworded carefully, obviously, but it would help these kind of issues be resolved or taken care of in the verbiage and it wouldn't necessarily have to come to us every single time. I think everybody would win in that scenario.
Councilman Lozano.
I would agree. Whenever possible, we need to get stuff out in front of a Measure R Committee. I I I would, I would have to agree that if we we have a committee there and they're not, they're not meeting or or we're not getting stuff out in front of them, I think that's, we need to start doing that. In this particular situation, I don't know if that's possible. In my reading in the staff report, it it looked like there were probably going to be some time constraints because of invoices that were that were probably sent our way. And to Councilman Vandenberg's point, I I would agree that if if possible, we should do what we can to spend the money within within reason. And I think we've done that so far, but we but we need to spend the money according to the way the voters pass the law. I don't believe the voters pass the law to the point where we could change it to a percentage, but it's an intriguing idea. Maybe we should do something different with our general fund money to maybe offset that if we can't do it and change law. So those are my thoughts on it. I I I would agree. I think as often as we can get out in front of them, we should.
I I see your hand up, Chief. I'm gonna call on you next. I just wanted to to mention too that my my original comment here, I wasn't exactly, I I I think we've talked about it enough before where I feel like there's a lot of gray language in Measure R and and I and I really unfortunately have to say that there's been kind of a failure of foresight when that language was drafted to kind of you know, loose ends more or less in the verbiage. And I think that all we can do is legally interpret it as we go along and and that's been done, I think, several times. So not to kick that dead horse, I for one believe that, you know, the bigger purpose here is, you know, we have money that's raised for the use to supplement our police department. And it needs to go to law enforcement. And I feel like even though some of these things can be a gray area, I I'm not necessarily disputing the funds being spent here on this. And I think there's other times where people say you can't use the money for that. It's not, it's whatever. And I I think it's just, you know, you can, again, you have this language that's just not real clear sometimes. So I'm not just being that, I just only am just focusing on the Oversight Committee as the importance of their role as oversight. And I feel like, you know, we we need to respect that because that was part of the, you know, part of the measure when it was passed. So Chief Kalanowski, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention it was our intent to bring it to the Measure R Subcommittee that was scheduled before this meeting. However, we were not positioned to launch that meeting in time, so we moved it to November tenth. And back in August, before the tragic events with Officer Graywall and Herrera, I had this contract on my desk set to go to Measure R and ultimately to this body. Just like we did on the camera program with the Public Safety Committee to brief them on that. However, we encumbered dollars in this service provided in conjunction with this peer support program. And so I'm trying to push the invoice payment and the launch of this peer support program that's desperately needed as an organizational enhancement for the officers under officer, well, excuse me, under officer wellness. And so I know that it might seem a little wonky, but it is our intent and we have a draft agenda that includes the briefing of the peer support program to Measure R on November tenth.
Okay, well, yeah, and I and I feel comfortable and I do, I know that Rich mentioned that the in the staff report, it mentioned the time constraints and I do understand that was part of it. I just so I think I think, you know, I think it's just would make me feel better just that there's a clear understanding that Measure R dollars spent, if they could, you know, in ninety nine percent of the time, you know, we make sure that we we show this to them first before it comes to us. I just out of respect to them and and again, you know, these dollars for this purpose, I think it's important. I think it's an important thing that that for the department and for our officers to have this this counseling group in place. And, you know, I've said it before that it doesn't make any, really do any good to have, you know, one point six million dollars to sit in the bank. If it's if that money is intended to support our police department and our officers. So that's why I've been very open minded to things that I feel like are are helpful to the police from Measure R. So with that spirit and intent, I I would support approving this tonight. I just wanted to bring that up. Councilman Papano, you have a comment?
Yeah, you know, when I read this and was gonna stay on the consent calendar, the first thing that came to mind, if you're not familiar with it, do a little internet research and look at the the spike in police officer suicides in the last couple of years. I've unfortunately become intimately familiar with it in my office. And I know there was another one a couple of weeks ago in our region, so anybody who would question that this is not supporting keeping our officers out on the street needs education. So I wholeheartedly support this expenditure and I think it fits within Measure R.
All right, thank you. Agreed. Mr. Vandenberg.
I want to state clearly that I wasn't suggesting that in any way and I don't uns, I did not hope this would not get supported. I do support this fully. My point being is the optics of how this looks, that it didn't really go through oversight before it gets to us. And going back, this is a longstanding position I have, going back to the big dust up we had with Measure R that I feel, and that's why I brought it up, that I feel if Measure R was reworded better, it would be more appropriate for the for now as opposed to two thousand eight when it was written. And we could avoid a lot of this, and I don't think necessarily this would even come up for approval in front of the council. I'm trying to, I guess, in in short, I think with the proper wording, it could be streamlined instead of having these discussions too often. That was my main intent.
All right. Thank you, sir. Well, with that, if there's no future, I mean, if there's no further council comments, do we have any public comment on this item, Tina?
We have no hands raised online.
Okay. If you have a comment on this item, you can raise your hand now. Otherwise, I will be looking to entertain a motion here briefly on this item. So please raise your hand if you have a comment, if you are on Zoom or if you are on the phone, please star six, raise your hand. While we're waiting for that, Chief, I appreciate your insight on that and the comments by the council. And I think that this council as a whole has always been very supportive of anything that our police officers need. And again, Measure R has been a very useful tool in that. So.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would say that this was part, this was in a an item brought forward by Acting Sergeant Kyle Slater, who this was his leadership project. And he researched this group and brought this presentation forward to the administration and the city manager. And we are proud of the work and I am thankful that he did this work before August because that has saved this organization a lot of stress and anxiety for having this group in, and it's been very helpful for us. So thank you.
Thank you and thank you, Officer Slater. Do we have any hands raised or comments?
No hands raised.
Okay, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the Measure R appropriation and agreement for crisis intervention and peer support program services.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Papano, seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papano.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Approved five zero. Moving on to I six. I I had a late question on this today and I was able to get an answer back, but there was a part, and I just want, I just felt it necessary just to to bring the answer forward for the public. So there was, my initial question was, there was, it seemed that that the additional hundred thirty thousand dollars were being asked to supplement the, I'm sorry, the subject is the the amendment to tax tax task order number one with some us for short term construction inspection services, we're being asked to appropriate additional thirty thousand dollars on top of the hundred thousand that was approved due to some overtime and addition with inspection services. And it was mentioned in the staff report that some of this was due to a leave of absence from inspector, which concerned me because I felt that because we had a leave of absence, now we incurred, you know, tremendous amount of more money, which could be the case, but it seems that also, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but these funds don't aren't actually being paid for by the city. These are passed on to developers. So I just wanted for you to clarify that for the public on this item.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. With regard to this, yeah, back in July twentieth, I think it was, the council approved an appropriation of a hundred thousand dollars for the city to use a consultant inspector for various development project or encroachment permit type project work. Our inspector had a a leave of absence that was scheduled and so we use a consultant inspector to cover that that workload. And anyway, there was, you know, much as we expected, usually August, September, it's kind of winding down the construction season. And so there's a lot of extra effort, overtime kind of thing, and that was the case. And so the other piece of it was our staff inspector, his extent, his leave that extended by three weeks, that was unforeseen originally. And so we knew that we'd have this consultant inspector for the additional three weeks time to cover. Again, so those two reasons are why we're asking for the additional thirty thousand dollars now. And yes, these these costs are paid by fees charged to developers on their on their construction project inspections and and encroachment permit inspections. So there's no cost to the city, no out of pocket, so to speak, from city funds.
All right, I appreciate that. And thank you for getting me back that answer this afternoon on that and and apologize for, you know, having to bring, uh, Councilman or sorry, Vice Mayor Sandu, you have a question?
Yes, I have a question, just a clarification. Mr. Selling, you have inspected, you said three, how many how many week there was only leave of absence?
You know, I don't know exactly when he left. It was toward the end of July and then he came back on October twenty sixth.
So they were on three weeks, right?
So then he was essentially gone for what August, September, he was basically, I think, scheduled to be out about two months and then he needed an additional three weeks. So and that's what took him to late October.
So that's legal man's absence as compared to the thirty thousand dollar we paying to so much, right?
Roughly, yes, because there's some overtime charges, you know, from September. And I think in some in August as well. So so overtime, obviously, a time and a half. So it's not a one to one ratio necessarily.
All right, thank you. I just want to be clarification on that.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We have no hands raised online.
Okay. Again, if you have a comment, raise your hand on Zoom. If you are a spectator or star six to raise your hand if you're on the phone. Give you a moment to do that and then we will move on for motion. Any hands raised? Did you leave your hand up by mistake?
Yes, sir. That's my mistake. Thank you.
No public comment, Tina? Rose?
No public comment.
All right, looking for a motion to approve adopt a resolution authorized the city manager to execute amendment number one to task order number one with some us incorporating increasing task order number one from one hundred thousand to one hundred thirty thousand. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Don't move.
Moved by Councilmember Vandenberg.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Papano. I know your mics go at the same time, so sorry. All right, have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papano.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Resolution is approved five to zero. Moving on to our last item on the consent, item F seven, which is subject is the award of construction contract for the Fourth Street Corridor ADA Sidewalk Improvement Project CPI five twenty one N. So So I I had some questions. I know, I guess, Mike is prepared to to give me those questions, which I have not just for, since you have not gotten those answers yet, they were gonna. Hold them to the meeting, but my concerns were brought to staff. I met with our, Mike was out Monday, so I met with Trung and Bessie, I think it is. From staff regarding the two bidders. The two bids, something jumped out at me. Because the two bids, they were like a hundred ninety eight thousand and change versus a hundred ninety six thousand and change, very close bids. And one of the bidders, most of the items were very similar, you know, within ballpark, which is expected. But there was a couple of line items, one of them had to do with concrete work and the price per concrete work was like. A hundred nineteen dollars from company A per square feet versus a hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents. Per square feet by company B, but yet on a higher line item for a for a different type of concrete work. Company B was consistent at a hundred and eighteen fifty where I, company A was thirty dollars a square foot, so it was like five times the difference and and so that basically was like a twenty two thousand dollar difference on one line item. And it just looked suspect to me, so I I was concerned. With an error on one either one of the others or or what, and I wanted some explanation on that. And so, Mike, did, did you? Have something on that?
So what I can tell you and 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 in my discussion with Trung, I think he was trying to convey the same thing. Bidders will play with their bids for various reasons. Sometimes they'll do what we call front loading and that's usually on larger, longer term projects. Because they want to get more money upfront, so they'll they'll bid items accordingly. And so you won't necessarily see what would be a, you know, a market rate price, so to speak. It can be extremely high, extremely low depending. And and I'm looking at the bids too, and I and I see the issue that you're pointing out, Mayor. What I would say is, you know, again, as bidders do different things for whatever reasons, they're known probably only to them in certain. Cases like this, but while that unit cost on the minor concrete sidewalk is very low for the one bidder and is consistent, as you said. On the other concrete item for the other bidder. If you look at the concrete demolition item, it's basically a flip flop and so. You know, it'd be speculative on my part, but what I would say is potentially the one bidder was including some of the formwork maybe in the demolition item and the other one was including it in the concrete item. When you look at those two items together, there's about a four thousand dollar difference when you combine the two items. So again, bidders. Do strange things sometimes that we don't necessarily, you know, can make sense of, but in the end, in reviewing bids. Both there's were, you know, deemed responsive, and so it really just comes up as the low bid. Per public contract code for a public agency such as a city, so.
Yeah, you mentioned that. Being a contractor, I think your mic went on, Mike, it's.
Yeah, let me turn it off because you're cutting out.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I'm I've been a low voltage contractor for twenty five years and so I've very, you know. Familiar with the bidding process and and having subs come under my company. And, you know, a lot of people will bid low and then they change order up, you know, especially with city projects where in this case were being asked for a twenty thousand dollar contingency. My fear was that this company was going to come in, bid it and then just rely on change orders to get the additional cost. It was disappointing to me that we had a local company, which is local Galt company by a Galt family. That is literally going to lose this project because of a one percent difference in a in a two hundred thousand dollar project. And and I just didn't, I was just leery that there was some, some, you know, number shifting going around on purpose to then, you know, come back and change order later on. And I know that's commonplace. I know that and but that was my concern. You know, I wish that we had something in place that would allow us to do business locally. I know that we have a municipal code that allows us to do that. Outside of public projects, but not on public projects. But I just wanted to make sure that. You know, we were not having someone to, it just because it, the demolition was like twenty four dollars. A square foot and then install was thirty. I just like, I don't know how you could tear out concrete for twenty four dollars a square foot and then put it back in for thirty. You know, for a six dollar difference when when that includes the actual concrete, it just didn't seem legit, so. They probably are, you know, front loading on on things like. I think it was logistics or not logistics, but. I think what the whatever the line item was called.
Probably a mobilization.
It was like sixteen thousand on their part versus five hundred on the local company, so I thought was like a huge difference, so clearly front loading there. Anyways, so again, too, you know, on these projects, what what? You know, I just wish that we could stay in budget and I and I and I asked, you know, I think I mentioned this to you, Mike, that. You know, in the public sector and the private sector, it's easy to say, you know, hey, this number you're giving me, is it legit? Like, are we gonna, you know, be in that number? And occasionally you'll see, you know, come back and go, well, you know, we had some unforeseen, but typically in the private sector, you don't see people going into like massive change orders. As much as you see in the public sector and so I for one. You know, I'm okay with approving this 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 bid to the to the to the high, you know, to the low bidder, you know, even though they were just a sliver under. But I I just don't know about the twenty thousand contingency. I I just, I would like to see this company stay within their budget. I feel like I feel like. I I really have it in my gut that they're going to come back and they're going to use all twenty thousand of that money if we don't, if we don't. You know, minimize the contingency here or or at least have it come back to council if there's any overages or something. These are my thoughts. I'm just trying to look out for, you know, taxpayer dollars here. So does anybody have, any of the council have any comments on this?
We don't have the authority to check to select the other bidder.
I believe we do not. We would have to deem them irresponsible or unresponsive, which I don't think that's the case. And, you know, numbers being not really, you know, that's not grounds for that. The only way we could do would be to reject both bids and require both companies to come back. I know there's maybe some time constraints, which I. You know, I understand, but let me ask you about that, Mike. If we were to reject both bids. I mean, I know that that would, you know, we'd have to call the companies and have them rebid and there's that would push things off and but, you know, these curbs and these ADA issues down in Old Town. Have been like this for like twenty something years. I mean, are we talking about a month? We talking about a couple of weeks? I mean, what are we talking about?
You know, it's hard to say, I, you know, not to sound like some bureaucrat or something, but. We are into the inclement weather time of year, and so we were hoping to to obviously beat the weather here, and I think that that window is, you know, is closing fast. We've already had one major storm, obviously. And hopefully we'll have a normal winter, but, you know, typically weather patterns are such that we probably have have got time to complete it this calendar year. You know, again, if weather permitting, if we were to rebid this, you're probably looking at the construction wouldn't occur until next spring. You know, April, May kind of thing, so. And then the other thing and the city attorney may weigh in too. Typically, if you're to reject and rebid a project. There needs to be some review of the project and and potentially any. Changes or modifications considered. So and then the other risk about it is, you know, obviously prices can increase as as time goes by. And with the, you know, supply chain issues like we keep hearing about, we don't know how volatile that may be as far as as construction. You know, pricing on on materials, so. I mean, it's it's likely to cost more. The other thing is, is we're not guaranteed that either one of these bears will bid the job again. Or there may be somebody new that comes in now based, you know, they may not have bid it before because of their schedule. At the time when when we did this, so we just don't know what we would get. So so just to kind of give you a sense of what that might look like.
Right, good points, understood. Somebody other hand up or no? Okay. Well, and you and you made good points and I and unfortunately, you know, I I would love to do business locally and it's just unfortunate that there was such a hair difference and. Local company couldn't couldn't, you know. And if I think there was more time, I'd love to see them both sharpen their pencils and come back and maybe it would be a better deal for the taxpayer, or maybe it wouldn't. I don't know, but. If there's no questions on this from anybody else, is there any public comment on this item, Tina?
There are no hands raised online, sorry.
Okay. Could I, could I entertain? What what about if we reduce the contingency just to try to keep the bidder more in line? I mean, could we do like a smaller contingency with anything over that coming back? I mean, because we're asking for like, you know, fifteen percent is like a lot. I mean. I I mean, I don't know.
So. I'm sorry. What I would, what I would say on a small job like this, yeah, usually the contingency is around ten percent typically. On a small job like this and you, you know, as engineers, we look at what's the potential, you know, for unforeseen issues to come up. And so there is some, you know, increased potential on a job like this. It's an old area, you know, once they, once they tear into it. You know, if there's anything that might need to additional work that might need to be done, so that's why we're asking for a bit more. If you reduce it, I mean, the thing, the other thing I would just remind the council of is a contingency is not a given that it's going to be spent. I mean, we as your staff and our inspectors are monitoring the work and that it's, you know, that it's done in accordance with standards. And that it's done efficiently and professionally. And so that, you know, we're basically monitoring the contractor that they're not taking advantage, so to speak, of the city. We would have to agree on any additional quantities or additional work that would, you know, essentially be charged against that contingency, so. So we as staff would have to agree to it. It's not just the contractor says, well, I'm going to need to do this and it's going to cost you five grand. You know, write me a check or add it on to my next payment. It doesn't work like that. The city and the contractor have to have to agree.
Okay. Mr. Splendario, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, as a point of clarification. Mr. Selling, it looks like the resos for it does the standard ten percent project contingency unless I'm reading it wrong. I'm just looking at the staff report.
Yeah, does the staff report, or is it ten? Did I make an error in saying fifteen?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it is ten. It's the standard.
Okay, I don't know why I said fifteen, staff reports in fifteen, but it is nineteen thousand, yeah, the 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 amount looks right, nineteen thousand six hundred. Okay, well. I guess, you know, for my part, I'm just going to have to trust that you're going to hold them accountable. I just, you know, looking out for taxpayer dollar and again, just big picture here. Look, it's just, you know, in our position, it's tough because one minute here, we're just, you know, saying, hey, we're going to approve an extra twenty grand in case they need it. And then, you know, the next agenda item, sometimes it's, you know, cutting a softball program because we can't afford to pay, you know, staff number forty dollars to keep score or something. It's like we're rubbing nickels together and just, it's frustrating to just. Have on one hand, like to seem we have like no regard for money and then on the other hand. We just, you know, have to like slash and cut everything and so I I just. Want to be consistent in trying to look out for dollars, no matter which department it's in and and hold those contractors accountable. Which is what I try to do in my business. When I sub, I bring in subs, so. If there's no comment, no public comment, Tina, on this item?
No.
All right, well, I guess I'll entertain a motion to. Go ahead, Mike.
Well, I guess I just wanted to assure you and the council and and, you know, the constituents that public work staff, we very much do this the same way. We look at it as, you know, we're in charge of this money and we're not here to just give it away kind of thing, so we watch the dollars too, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. Can I get a motion to approve the award of contract, word of construction contract for fourth street quarter ADA sidewalk improvement CIP? Five two one N.
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Vandenberg.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Sandu, can have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye, approved five to zero. Okay, moving on to our next item. Which is item G, schedule matters notice of public hearings. Our subject is going to be the annexation of territory to community facilities district. Number twenty twenty dash one public services, specifically the annexation of number six. Katerina Estates. Tina, has the notice of public hearing been mailed and published in accordance with the law?
Yes, the notice was mailed and published in accordance with the law.
Thank you. Mr. Selling, if you would like to present the report for this.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I'll start. So this item is to consider the annexation of Katerina Estates residential development into the community facilities district twenty twenty dash one. For reference, CFD twenty twenty dash one was approved by the city council in June of last year. The CFD is the funding mechanism for new developments whereby various city services. Such as police and fire protection, flood protection and various ongoing maintenance activities related. The streets, lighting and landscaping are paid for. The special taxes proposed to be levied will provide the revenue to offset the cost of providing this increased city service. For the Katerina Estates development only. Mr. Bill Forrest will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Director Selling, Bill Forrest, Senior Civil Engineer. Set the stage, annexation number six Katerina Estates is located. South of H Street, east of the Union Pacific Railroad tracks, west of Joy Dry. Drive and north of the. Undeveloped land of the Galt Cemetery. Katerina Estates is comprised of sixty one single family residential lots. Total developed. Size of the parcel is twelve point four acres at your September twenty first. City council, meaning you approved the resolution of intention. Since that September resolution. Of intention Sacramento County processed a a lot line adjustment and assigned new APNs to. This area, and so that's why you'll see. If you compare the resolution of intention APNs to what's identified in this. That the development area went from two eight assessor parcel numbers to one. The CFD twenty twenty dash one assessment map was recorded with Sacramento County Clerk's Office on October eighth. In the resolutions, particularly the resolution tension, there's the what's called. The RMA, which the single family assessment. For CFD twenty twenty dash one of per lot is approximately. One thousand three hundred and seventy five dollars. With that, conclude. My statement, if you have any questions, otherwise I would suggest open the public hearing and proceed with the. Annexation. Process as been outlined to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Forrest. Thank you, Mr. Selling. Does the council have any questions for staff? Vice Mayor Sandu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill Forrest, I have just a clarification. You said they did a lot line adjustment. I think on the report, it does not say any any map or there or there is any map what they did on the lot line adjustment, or can you explain?
Sure. Originally. The Katerina Estates project area was comprised of two parcels, essentially. Going from Joy Drive over to the railroad tracks. So there was a southerly parcel to that extent. And then there was a northerly parcel immediately south of H Street. Which again, went from Joy over to the railroad tracks. What the lot line adjustment did was essentially take those two parcels. And that existing house at the corner of H and Joy Drive make. Have that be one parcel and the rest of the Katerina Estates development, the other parcel. Since the existing house is not subject to annexation. That's why it went from two APNs. To one.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the explanation.
All right, any other questions from council for staff? All right, if there is no question at this time, I will go ahead and we are now going to open the public hearing. To any protest, comments and questions from interested parties, including persons owning property within the annexation area. Katerina Estates of the community facilities district number twenty. Katerina Estates of the Community Facilities District Number 2020-1. So the public hearing is now open. If you would like to be called upon, please raise your hand on Zoom or star six if you are on the phone. Madam Clerk, if, uh, are there any written protests that have been received?
No written protests have been received.
Okay. Are there any persons registered to vote within annexation number six, Katerina Estates of Community Facilities District Number 2020-1? And if so, the number thereof.
The County of Sacramento Registrar of Voters has certified there are no registered voters within annexation number six, Katerina Estates of Community Facilities District Number 2020-1.
Okay. Does the owner of all taxable property annex, in annexation number six, Katerina Estates of Community Facilities District 2020-1, have they consented to holding the special election on November 2nd, 2021?
Yes.
All right. Are there any further public comment either on person, in person, I'm sorry, or on the telephone?
There are no raised hands online.
Okay. Uh, Madam Clerk, do you concur that the special election may be held on November 2nd, 2021?
Yes.
Okay. And with that, if there are no hands raised online and no public comment, then I will announce that there's no further public testimony will be accepted and I will now close the public hearing. Does any staff, I actually, does staff have any, you have your hand up, Vice Mayor, did you leave your hand up or is that a question? Okay. I, I do have a quick question. I'm sorry I should have asked before, but, um, the, the, the one home that's still in that area that's on the corner of Joy Drive and I guess it's, whatever the street is right there, forget, um, is that not in the annexation area that's still being not, where are we notching around that? Mr. Forrest?
Correct. That was the lot line adjustment. While you were conducting the public hearing, I pulled up the full staff report. And what you'll see is, uh, the second to last item, uh, of the staff report was the original assessor's parcel map, map. And what you see is two parcels of, as I had previously outlined. And so, uh, and then the second, the last map, the second map is the assessment map as it reflects the, uh, lot line adjustment. And that is the map that was recorded with the Sacramento County. So that existing house at the corner of H Street and Joy Drive is what's referred to as a napots, not part of the subdivision. And so therefore it's not subject to annexation into the, uh, CFD 2020-1.
Okay. And, and I only thought of it because it, as the clerk, there was no one living within, currently living within the annexation period than I thought of that one home. So I wanted to clarify that. Thank you for that, um, Mr. Forrest. So with that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the following resolution. Resolution of the City Council, the City of Galt, California, calling a special election and submitting to the qualified electors of territory proposed to be annexed to the City of Galt, Community Facilities District Number 2020-1 Public Services, County of Sacramento, State of California, the question of levying special taxes within that territory, annexation six, number six, a Katerina Estates. Katerina.
I'm moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano. Second. Seconded by Councilmember Papino. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor, Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Resolution approved five zero. All right, Tina, you have next?
I hereby conduct the special election by stating that the official ballot has been opened and that all votes are in favor of the proposition presented on the ballot.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion to approve the following resolution. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Galt, acting in its capacity as legislative body of the City of Galt, Community Facilities District Number 2020-1 Public Services, County of Sacramento, State of California, declaring the results of a special election in such community facilities district on the proposition of the annual levy of special taxes within territory proposed to be annexed to said community facilities district to pay the cost of certain services to be provided by the community facilities district, determining that the territory proposed to be annexed is added to and part of said community facilities district with full legal effect and ordering the recording of a map of the boundaries of said community facilities district, including the territory annexed thereto, annexation number six, Katerina Estates. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember, uh, Lozano. I will second that. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Resolution approved five zero. Now look for a motion to introduce the title only and waive the further reading of the following ordinance. Ordinance of the City of, the City Count, I'm sorry, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Galt authorizing the levy of special taxes in a community, community facilities district, including certain annexation territories identified as annexation number six, Katerina Estates, into the City of Galt, Community Facilities District Number 2020-1 Public Services to complete the annexation of the property to the community, community facilities district. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Vandenberg. I will second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Ordinance is approved five zero. All right. Do that. All right. We'll now move on to our regular calendar. First item is going to be from our city manager's office, going to be the subject of the coronavirus COVID-19 update. Mr. Heinz.
Yes, good evening. Can everyone see the PowerPoint?
Yes, sir.
So for the public watching, uh, we track the cases and deaths in SAC County, and we track the cases and deaths in Galt that are due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The cases in Sacramento County have gone up 3% or 4,120. The number of deaths in Sacramento County have also gone up 3% or 60 individuals. The number of cases in Galt, um, have gone up 2% or 83. The number of deaths in Galt have gone up two, by two individuals or 4%. The daily case rate is currently at 15.1 or 15.3 per 100,000 population. And this is up from 14.1 per 100,000 on October 19th, the date of our last council meeting. Area hospitals currently have 180 COVID hospitalization, and that's actually down from 185 on, uh, from October 19th. COVID testing continues to be offered every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday here in the City of Galt at the Tribola Center and at the Parks and Recreation Offices. Daily testing, I'm sorry, testing details are only available from Thursday, uh, from the Thursday test site. On, uh, Thursday, October 28th, 200 total tests were administered compared to 169 on October 14th. Information regarding COVID-19 testing, uh, sites in Galt can be found at the City of Galt's website and social media pages. Information regarding, um, COVID-19 vaccination locations can be found on the Sacramento County COVID-19 website, uh, COVID-19 vaccine webpage. We were presented with a certificate of recognition, uh, by the Sacramento County, uh, Department of Public Health. And this was presented to the Tribola Community Center, uh, frontline community COVID-19 testing site from June 2020 to October 21, completing recognition, uh, recognizing the completion of over 178,000 tests and continuous testing days, six days a week. And we appreciate the, uh, thanks, uh, from the county. We have, uh, Parks and Rec Director Armando Solis and his team to thank for bringing this, um, honor to the City of Galt. And Mayor, that concludes the COVID update. Mayor, you're on, you're on mute.
Sorry, yeah, didn't realize that. Thank you for that presentation and, uh, just to thank you to Armando and his staff for, um, all the hard work they've been doing, um, for the community and for, uh, for our county, for, for the Tribola Center. So congratulations on that. Do I have any, uh, council comments on this item? All right. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There are no hands raised online.
Okay. Uh, if you need to make a public comment on this particular item, you may do so by raising your hand on Zoom now. Otherwise you can press star six if you're on the phone and we will call on you. I'll give a couple of brief moments for someone to do that if they choose. Okay, no, just no hands raised, no comments?
There are no, no hands raised online.
Okay. All right. We will move on then. Uh, item H2 has been tabled, so we will move on to item H3, Public Works Department. Project is going to be Consumers Groundwater Management Presentation, I'm sorry, Representation and Funding. Mr. Selling. I'm sorry, Councilmember Lozano, you have a question?
I do. Um, just before we go on to this item, um, H2, when is that coming back to us?
I think, uh, the, um, city manager was going to get back to us on that. Um, he wanted to get with Juan, the facility. I mean, Mr. Heinz, you want to comment on that?
Well, we, yes, I spoke with Juan today and it looks like we need to provide some, um, basically a refresher of what we agreed on back in, on May 22nd. There needs to be some connecting of the dots from the council comments back of May 22nd to the document that you see before you. And, uh, we'll be, uh, arranging a meeting with Juan, um, um, in the future. And this will probably be back before you sometime during January or February. Ironically, February is typically the time in the cities I've been in where we actually adopt the strategic plan prior to the development of the budget. So we may just want to change the numbers and instead of 2023, call it 2224 and just, um, tie it into the next budget.
Okay, I appreciate that, City Manager Heinz. Um, I, I just wanted to know, uh, just for the public that may have tuned in to, to see the item, so.
Yes.
Look at maybe, maybe just after the first layer.
Okay. And if any member of the public has a question about the strategic plan, they're welcome to call me.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Councilmember Lozano. Okay, uh, moving on to item F3, Consumers Groundwater Management, Representation and Funding, report by, uh, Mr. Selling. Go ahead.
Good evening, and, good evening, and Mayor and fellow council members. So I wanted to give you a, uh, basically an update workshop, if you will, on the efforts we've been making over the past several months. We're getting close to a couple of major action items, um, with regard to a, uh, governance agreement, the funding agreement, and then the groundwater sustainability plan. So that's what, uh, I'll be presenting here for you tonight. So as you may recall, from the prior presentations I'd made to the council back in December of last year, and then this past May, the state passed the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, or what we refer to as SIGMA, uh, in 2014. The key aspects of SIGMA are that it requires all overdrafted basins to develop a groundwater sustainability plan or GSP, which for us is due by January 31st of 2022, so just the next couple of months. Since the consumable, uh, sub-basin is considered a, uh, medium priority basin. It allows 20 years for us to demonstrate sustainability of the basin. And then it's preferred that sustainability be achieved via local management, uh, what we call groundwater sustainability agencies or GSAs. There's going to be a number of acronyms in this in case you hadn't already picked up on that, so I'll try to explain them as I go. So we want, uh, local management rather than the state to take over a management of the basin. As the city, uh, has jurisdiction within the city limits, uh, overlying our portion of the basin, the city declared itself a GSA in 2017. There are six other GSAs, uh, within the basin that we're working cooperatively with. And, uh, we've got a couple of framework agreements and a, uh, and a preliminary funding agreement, cost sharing agreement, uh, which were all approved by the council as shown on the slide there. So you've seen this map before, but as a reminder for everyone, this map shows the entire consumable sub-basin and the various GSAs with their associated areas. The city's area is shown in pink. I'll kind of move my cursor over here, just kind of down here in the lower left. It's a little bit outdated because there's been a couple annexations since then, uh, but we've submitted those to the state and they just recently approved those. So, uh, we'll update the map, uh, before the, uh, plan is finalized. So the GSA group has a technical consultant that is under contract to the county. The consultant has done extensive work in gathering data and modeling the basin. From that work, it's been determined that the basin has an average historical overdraft of approximately 11,600 acre feet per year. So that's the amount that's in excess, uh, that's being put back into the basin. Uh, so that's excess taken out, I should say, uh, versus what's flowing into the basin on an annual basis. The consultant has further identified a goal of 20,000 acre feet per year that's needed to mitigate this overdraft amount. The group has identified several projects and management or conservation actions, uh, in an effort to achieve that goal, which I'll touch on shortly. The consultant has analyzed, uh, these projects and management actions to determine how much each can help offset that overdraft amount. So the difference between the 11,600 and the 20,000, that 8,400 acre feet, that's basically what's recommended as a cushion, uh, you know, or a contingency, if you will, in case one or more of the projects have a lower than, uh, expected yield, or if there's any delays, uh, that may occur. And then, as I reflected here, uh, the city's share is actually quite small, being only about 4% of the roughly 120,000 acre feet that are extracted annually from the basin. I want to note though, that the state looks at each basin as a whole, uh, so it's key that we work together with the other GSAs and coordinate our efforts. So for the projects and management actions, the plan needs to specify how they will work, quantify the amount of recharge or conservation each is anticipated to achieve and a timeframe for each. Obviously, some projects will take a few years to go through the planning process and then possibly additional time as well, uh, to, uh, to retain funding. Uh, and, and or reach their full benefit potential. As far as some of the projects that have been identified to achieve that 20,000 acre foot goal for the city, uh, we have a project that I mentioned this before, to use our wastewater treatment plant, uh, treated effluent on the surrounding, uh, agricultural land for irrigation. We estimate that this would provide about 1,400 acre feet annually of pumpage savings. So that's 1,400 that can apply toward that 20,000, uh, goal. And a similar project you did using treated effluent from the SAC Regional Wastewater Facility is expected to provide another 2,000 acre feet toward the goal. Uh, one of the other GSAs, Omichumney Hartno, or OH, as we commonly refer to them, they have a couple of projects. Um, one is a recharge project to basically take wet winter water and put it over ag land that's permeable, so it can recharge the basin. And the other is what they call a flow augmentation project. And that's basically where they take water that's stored. Excuse me, I'm overcoming a cold and I'm trying to, uh, keep from coughing. But anyway, that's where they take, uh, water that's been stored and they basically use it to, um, uh, release it down into the consumables, so that way it can, uh, that water, as it flows through, can recharge the basin. Again, that's kind of a, a winter type project. Another project that's been proposed is the following of ag land, and I want to, you know, emphasize that this is purely on a voluntary basis. So it's hard to say how much that will, uh, achieve from that because we don't know how many farmers are willing to maybe stop irrigating their land. And it could depend on things like how wet of a, a rainfall season we have, uh, meaning if they get enough, you know, natural rainfall irrigation, they may not have to supplement it, so they might choose to follow in that case. And then the biggest project that we have is with the Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency or SAFCA. And that's a proposal basically to take excess winter floodwater from the American River down through the Folsom South Canal where it'd be stored for further non-winter distribution. This will require agreements with SAFCA and others and likely take a few years to put into place. It's an innovative project and would likely receive state and maybe federal grant money. So so that's, that's a big one that we're hoping to get some additional funding on. And then if it was implemented, it had multiple benefits that could go a long way to helping us meet the goal. So now that we've covered the amount of overdraft and some project examples to mitigate it, I want to go over the proposed governance. The structure would be a Joint Powers Authority, or JPA, where each agency has a single representative on the Consumers Groundwater Authority. And that's the, the working name that we're giving this, or the acronym again is CJCGA, Consumer's Groundwater Authority Board. So a board of seven directors, each agency appoints its director and the director has a single vote. It's not weighted by acres or water use or population. It's simply one agency, one vote. The agreement stipulates various actions and their voter vote threshold. So for things like the budget, that requires a super majority vote and for other things like issuing bonds or other indebtedness, that's going to require a six, seventh vote. So almost unanimous. The authority board will have typical powers to provide for the ongoing management, reporting, staff oversight and various other administrative functions. I want to emphasize that the agreement provides that each member agency retains its full authority. And that is the CGA, meaning the body as a whole cannot force a project or action on a given agency's jurisdiction over its objection. Some of the key powers of the JPA include managing and implementing the GSP or Groundwater Sustainability Plan, establishing and approving a budget, an annual budget, collecting funds from the member agencies, approving those projects and management actions that I went over and related items like contracts to build or construct them, approving applications and allocations for grants or other funding opportunities and potentially incurring debt. Funding will be utilized for the ongoing administration of the GSP and implementation of projects and management actions. Currently, the county with concurrence from the GSA staff representatives has taken the lead to develop a fee program and recently initiated this fee study effort. It is anticipated that will be based on parcel size categories. But I think yeah, there's still, there's still some legalities that are going on with that. And so I'll cover that a bit in the, in the funding plan slide. So to the question of funding, in developing the JPA agreement, the group determined that due to time constraints and the variety of use, it wasn't feasible to complete a fee program as it needed to be adopted and submitted to the county's assessors by this past August. So consequently, the group determined the best course of action was to develop a funding plan for the first year only so as to allow additional time to develop a program that would meet the needs of the various GSAs. This will be another item for the CGA board to direct. The GSA reps worked with the consultant to estimate the cost for the first year, including the administration, monitoring and reporting, which is approximately $445,000, as you'll see there on the slide. The funding comes from member contributions, some of which are either in-kind contributions, as in the city's case, where others are from fees approved by the individual GSAs governing bodies. As you can see, the city's share was determined to be $15,000, which is between 3 and 4% of the total. So it's pretty consistent with our use now. Though I touched on a few, such as general policies and procedures, excuse me, in the annual report, some of the first year efforts will additionally include an annual audit, data management, legal support, outreach, grant efforts, et cetera. Looking ahead, the subsequent funding agreement will need to develop a methodology to assign fees that reflect ag and ag residential's respective uses and benefits. You will also need to include project costs. Roughly, staff estimates that an average annual cost to manage the basin would be in the 1.5 million range. So you can see that first year initial amount, but just under a half a million is about a third of what an average year will be once the projects kind of kick into gear. For the city's part, staff will be including the city's share of GSP costs into the upcoming rate study. Additionally, other potential revenues may include the sale of excess stored water due to land falling. And for the SAFCA, flood managed aquifer recharge project or flood mar, as it's commonly referred to, possible grant funding, like I mentioned, state or federal might be additional funding that could help us on that project. I want to note, though, that those potential revenues are likely relatively small and some years away yet and likely could, you know, could be affected by, well, it could help us positively or negatively by the amount of rainfall we receive or not. And lastly, to answer the overarching question of what if we don't do this plan and fund these efforts? The answer is the state or the Department of Water Resources specifically can take over management of the basin and allocate how much water each GSA is allowed. SIGMA includes costs for such a scenario. As shown on this slide, that's more, it's around $5.1 million if the state were to take over, is what we estimate based on what's in this, in the SIGMA regs. So that's roughly, you know, three times, maybe a little more than three times the cost of what the local management is at roughly one and a half million. And the city's share would, would definitely more than double, almost triple, is what we estimate on that. So just to give you a sense of what would happen if we were to forego local management. So with regard to next steps, at the next council meeting, the council will be, will consider approving both the JPA and the initial funding agreement, as well as appoint one council member to be the city's representative or director on the JPA. Outreach will continue as applicable, though this is mostly in the other GSAs. I'll be providing the council with a workshop on the final groundwater sustainability plan at the December 7th meeting. So that's kind of the second piece. This first piece is the JPA agreement and the funding agreement and selecting a representative. And then the, the second piece is completing or approving the groundwater sustainability plan. So that'll be, I'll do a workshop on the 7th and then I'll come back on the 21st as the plan to have the council consider approving the GSP. And again, it's really kind of the last realistic date that we have before we have to submit it to the state and at the end of January. So once approved by all the GSAs, the GSP will be submitted to the State Department of Water Resources by the January 31st, 2022 deadline. The Joint Powers Authority is expected to start monthly meetings, we anticipate in February, right now, next year. And then, of course, implementing the GSP will be ongoing. And then as one of the first significant items, approval of the first annual report, which is due in April 22. You know, that seems a little strange. That's how the state has set it up. So we'll only be a few months essentially past submitting it to when the first annual report is due. But that's the way it's structured. So with that, Mr. Mayor and Council, that concludes my presentation and I'm available to answer any questions.
All right. Do we have any comments for Mr. Stelling? Mr. Papadou.
Thanks for the presentation. You're informative. Just to make sure I'm understanding, you said that the, the JPA could not per se impose a project in a member GSA's jurisdiction. That was correct?
Correct, over its objection. Yeah. So if they had a project that might fall under the, you know, portion of it might fall within the city boundary and we were opposed, they couldn't do it within the city boundary.
Okay. So we'd be primarily developing projects with their input, but for our city? And then looking to have approval of the JPA in general for funding those projects? Is that kind of the way it would generally flow?
Generally, yes. What, there may be, depending on the project that are, you know, again, the state's looking at the basin as a whole. And depending on what, you know, level of this benefit per se, a project may have for the city, we may be asked to participate on a project in someone else's jurisdiction. But it's collectively a whole. So largely, we would be, well, we've got the one project identified. I think there's another potential conservation project of a smaller degree for us, but we would also, you know, be participating in the projects of others as well.
Right. Okay. And certainly don't want the state taking over management of anything. So I appreciate that. That's all.
Councilman Vanderburg.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Stellings, did I hear correctly, it's going to be roughly 1.5 million a year?
So that, that's, that's correct, roughly 1.5 million per year. We estimate at this time, again, it's a 20-year plan. And it's, you know, depending on what kind of bang for the buck we can get, you know, some of these projects, they're pretty preliminary estimates at this point. I mean, they're five years out, some of them. So you know, they could certainly change one way or another, or other projects may have a greater benefit. Or if we get several wet years, you know, we may get a lot more recharge than, than normal too. So it's, it's a, you know, it's, it's a, there's a, there's a bit of a, you know, a variation to this thing. So, but that's, that's our rough approximation at this point. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, management is certainly something we have to tackle whether we like it or not. And those are really variable. But I was curious, so there's, that's an estimated and it's, it's going to start next year after we pay this just under half a million. And then if there's roughly 8,000 homes in Galt, that's a $15 a month increase per household. So that's that's basically what a rate, rate assessment would add to the water rates of every household. This.
You're on mute, Mike.
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, I don't have a good number at this time. And so I'd be reluctant to put a number out there that people, you know, when you say something like that, people might latch on and if it comes in higher kind of thing, you know, then, then, then we have some struggle, you know, to to get
That's a fair point. I guess my concern, I mean, for the citizens, of course, but also that would be offset by any grants or what the actual project costs were in the future, correct? I just want to have a nice, nice rounded understanding and stated in public.
Yes, that's, that's correct. You make an excellent point, Councilmember. You know, depending on grant funding, again, depending on projects and how successful or not they may be, it could, it could vary. So
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to step on you. Last question, you know, it's come out multiple times on social media that why are we growing if we don't have enough water? And overall, and I'm not holding you, your feet to the fire really, but how sustainable is this plan to, to give us back or keep even with the, with the constant push from the city or from the state to have us grow and Grove is growing, you know, exceedingly fast and they're pulling from the same water, basically.
Yeah. So that's a question that comes up a fair amount in, in the outreach workshops that we've had in various forms. And, you know, it's a bit of a good news, bad news kind of thing. As far as urban development goes, if you look at the, the water use for urban development versus ag, particularly ag, and obviously ag crops can vary dramatically as to how much water they use. To be an example, there's some crops can use as little as, say, a half a gallon an acre and others are using three to four gallons an acre. So it can vary quite dramatically. But, but urban, urban use is about a quarter of ag use. Just roughly speaking, because like I said, ag use can vary dramatically. So the, I guess the good news is, is what a lot of times people think as cities grow, they're using a lot more water than, you know, than was being used before they grew. And depending on how much of that land was in agriculture, you know, that may or may not be true because a lot of the ag land is actually using a lot more water per acre than, than urban areas. So and with the advancements in conservation and whatnot over the years, you know, that's, that's, that's only been borne out more so.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any further comments by council? All right. Well, again, thank you for your, for your presentation, Mr. Stelling. Do we have any public comment on this particular item? Do you know?
We have no hands raised online.
Okay. So again, if you are participating in the Zoom meeting and would you like to raise your hand and have a public comment on this item? May do so now, or you can press star six and raise your hand on the telephone. Okay, we have no comment, no hands raised?
No hands raised.
Okay. All right. Thank you again, Mr. Stelling. We'll move on to our next item, item four, which is the Corrigan Boulevard Traffic Improvements, including purchase of two radar speed signs agreement for restriping design and further analysis. Mr. Stelling?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. So at the, the last council meeting, we had a, a good discussion regarding several traffic related concerns that have been voiced over the prior few months. Focus on Corrigan Boulevard and the corridor as a whole. And then through the discussion, I think there was, there was some some focused interest on a couple of intersections, specifically Vauxhall and then Lake Canyon. And so from that discussion and the direction that staff heard from the council, we brought back this item for the council's consideration and it consists primarily of three, three items. And first is to purchase a couple of the radar speed feedback signs. These could be, these are portable, they could be placed anywhere within the city for that matter. But along the thought is primarily, you know, at least initially use utilize them in the Corrigan Corridor to, to help increase driver awareness to, to be, to enforce the, the speed limit. So that was the first item. And so we're asking for, and, and what we're looking at is these, these would be, I guess, kind of the latest technology, which has a few extra bells and whistles as far as being able to take traffic data in terms of counts of vehicles and, and speeds of those vehicles. And that would be helpful for public works and doing future traffic evaluations and it would also be helpful, I'm sure, for PD in their enforcement efforts. So that's the first piece. The second piece, as was discussed last council meeting, was to consider restriping the Corrigan Corridor. And the, the premise there is essentially through various studies across the country, it's been shown that as you narrow the lanes, you get what's called a context sensitivity from drivers, essentially that as they feel more confined, they tend to reduce their speed. And so the current lanes out there are approximately 11 to 12 feet varying. And so we've looked at it and we could probably reduce them to somewhere around 10 to 10 and a half feet. So you'd be reducing them at least a foot or more. And, and I can tell you from the, the studies that I've seen in the past, I would expect that we could get we could get probably in the five, five mile plus speed reduction from that. Now, in, in looking at that, there's really kind of two, two ways that we could do this. The first way would be to just simply grind off the existing striping. And then we would propose to use paint to restripe that, that would, and that's kind of where we started at. But then looking at the condition of the asphalt and, and I can tell you, and probably most of us have seen as we've driven through construction zones, particularly on the highway, when they, you know, change the striping, grind off the old and put on new to maneuver traffic one way or another, particularly I think of up here by Oak Grove on 99. Probably most of us have driven through that. It can be a little confusing for drivers. You know, because you can still see the grind marks from the old stripes. So obviously it's a poor aesthetic too. Obviously, it's a poor aesthetic too, but it also invites more deterioration of the pavement, because it's not sealed now for. For weather, so, all that said, essentially what we would propose is to do, do it right, if you will. Payment conditions is such that we'd probably be back in a few years anyway to, to repave it. So to do it right and, and put on that new pavement service, surface now. And then use what we call thermoplastic, which is a more durable striping material. Costs a bit more, but it, it, it pays for itself over, over the lifecycle cost, if you will. Paint will last two to three years, thermoplastic, depending on traffic and whatnot, it, it'll last probably about 10 years, so. So it, it tends to pay for itself. So anyway, that's the second item that we're looking at, and I think. We had a, a, we're requesting for the contract. For the city manager to potentially enter a contract, and we proposed to use one of our on-call consultants. Engineering consultants, this would save the, the time involved in, in going out with an RFP to basically the world. And, and because that's usually probably a four to five month process. To put it out there, draft it up, put it out there, get them time to, to review and come back with a proposal, and then come back to council and award the contract. So we can save, we can save some time by using an on-call consultant. So we'd, we'd work with that, and then the third item that we were asking was to. Give us the direction to go ahead with a formal intersection analysis. We've done some preliminary work, as you heard. At the last council meeting, but to, to go do, put out the tubes. And, and everything else as far as taking counts and monitoring pedestrian activities. At those two locations that I mentioned. So that's, that's the direction that, that we heard, and that's what we're proposing with this item tonight.
For the presentation. May want to turn. For some reason, we get on your mic. I don't know why that is. Yeah, thank you. So. I have a couple of questions. I'll start off with all that my council members go. The, the striping. The, the bike lane would become wider, the streets lanes become narrower from approximately 11 to 12 feet, going down to 10 or 10 and a half. What would the bike lane look like? Is it just going to be widened and look exactly the way it does now, or is it going to change colors? What, what areas? I don't think we talked about that.
Yeah, great question, Mayor, and I'll start, and I forgot to mention that Mr. Clarkson is also in the meeting and, and I'll defer to him if. If he has additional information he wants to provide. Excuse me, so the bike lane would essentially capture that pavement that we've taken away, if you will, from the travel lanes. So that roughly one foot from each lane, you're adding two feet potentially to the bike lane. Which we look to maximize at about six feet, which is the standard now. And, you know, to do the full project, yeah, I think you would, you would see the green standards as per. You know, the intersection approaches.
So the solid, because they're non-protected and then broken green across the intersections, or is it just? An, a white line with an interior green line based into it with the symbols.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Clarkson. I think he, he's more familiar with the detail on that. My understanding is it's usually broken on the approach to the intersection. But he may, he may have additional information to help answer that.
Mr. Clarkson, you.
City Council Mayor, yeah, this is Mark Clarkson, city engineer. One of the things that, that we do with the green is that we started at. Right before you enter an intersection, about 200 feet. So you get 200 feet of a solid green, and then you get it, you get about eight dashes or. I, I mean, about 100 feet of solid green and then 100 feet of dashes. And the dashes usually come out about eight dashes through that period of 100 feet, so. 200 feet before every intersection is where we put the green. The rest of it would be white.
Right. So if you have, let's say, I don't know. 200 yards of, of, of no intersection crossings, that's not going to be solid green the whole way, it's actually just the white, and then it becomes solid green. As you, 200 feet within the intersection, then it becomes broken, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So. And this, and this construction, Mike, would, I did, realistically, this restriping. Option is, is something that would take place next spring, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, given the, you know, inclement weather season starting now and just the time to. Get a consultant on board to design the project and then put it out for bid, that's what we're looking at, yes.
Okay, so. I like that staff brought back the striping, which we'd already talked about. I think ultimately, long-term, doing that. Is a twofold thing where we are attempting to reduce the speed limit, which I know the staff says are optimistic by doing that. We would be able to reevaluate the traffic study, and then hopefully, traffic would naturally slow down by. By the, under the ideology that you discussed, and then we could reevaluate the speed limit. I mean, honestly, in my opinion, reducing the speed of it five miles an hour. Obviously, it's only going to really matter if you're out there enforcing it, so enforcement, which is something we've talked about doing already. Is really going to be something, I think, ultimately with that option, that's not going to end all be an end all be all. The reason why I would still be in favor of that particular item is because I think that. With the further use of EV bikes and things I'm seeing a lot of now. It gets us to where we have an approved bike travel area in conjunction. So even though, in my opinion, I'm skeptical whether or not the narrowing, if we were to succeed in all that, and next, by next summer, we. Are able to reduce the speed limit, whether or not that's really going to keep people down. To, to the, to the point where people are going to be happy to live in that neighborhood that are complaining about that. I'm skeptical. Also too, I understand this is an arterial, so, you know, it's like, it's like a catch 22, it's like, we don't want to reduce the speed down too much, because. It's an arterial, we don't want to force people on surface streets, because then they're going through neighborhoods, and that's worse. So i- it's kind of a catch. I do like the speed signs that you've brought back. I think that's also brings awareness to people's speed and, and kind of catches their attention. Especially the ones that say slow down and not necessarily just the. Yeah, speed, but my concerns would be that. You know, there was, I think each of us had different concerns about different areas, and I mean, I think we all over, overall, were concerned about. Speed issues, and that's why, you know, which come from the, the community. But I think individual, each, each of us individually had other concerns that we were concerned with too. And although these items being brought back, I think that they're not really addressing a couple of the concerns that I had, which was. The Lake Canyon intersection, you know, I had several concerns, one is the non-working crosswalk lighting on the road, and I know that that's a. A poor design, and that's why the lights aren't working and all that, but I, I really feel like we're in, and I don't know if Frank can comment on that, but I feel like we're in a liability. Catch right there with, with having something in place. That even though it doesn't work, and we're saying, well, we still have the ones on the road, but the fact that. That product is supposed to do something and it's not, I don't know if that would, we're open to liability with that. But I feel like that intersection is a highly traveled and, and very unsafe. Intersection, and I would like, I, I wanted to see some kind of crosswalk enhancement. And, and even more so controlled intersection. Also, there was the Chelsom discussion where we have Chelsom has no crosswalk signage at all. Just has the, the crosswalk on the road, but there's no signage, so, so these measures, I think are. I appreciate them, but I feel like, I, I just feel like if we were looking for a compromise between what all of us were asking for and what you guys have brought to us. I don't know that we've kind of met in the middle, I feel like, I feel like, you know, striping coming next. So really, all we're beginning now, and they're in the, in the interim, would be a couple of speed signs and some additional enforcement from PD, which is obviously welcome. So these are my initial thoughts. I want to hear from the rest of the council, but those are just my thoughts at this point. Councilmember Lozano. Your microphone's on, sir.
I think Mr. Selling had his hand up first, may want to address something before I go.
Mr. Selling, go ahead.
I was just going to let you know, Mayor, good news on a couple of fronts there that you just mentioned. The next day, I think it was, or maybe two days after the last council meeting. Staff went out and removed those impalement lights to eliminate the confusion, so they're gone now at Lake Canyon, so there is the rapid. Flashing beacon that's there, and I, I went out and, and monitored it one morning myself. Everything's working, so, so it was good news at Lake Canyon, and then we did confirm that actually there are the advanced pedestrian signs. For Chelsom, so they, they were already out there, but it may have just been this kind of thing, but they were there and they're, they're, they're in place.
And it was Chelsom, you're sure it was Chelsom?
Yeah, I, I verified myself, and I know Mr. Clarkson did too.
Okay. All right, thank you for that, and good news on that crosswalk there. Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, that's all I was going to mention was there, they are there at Chelsom. I, I am, I, the one thing I would say is, is that depending on if the wind is blowing or not, you can either see them or not, and so. If we could get some, some kind of, have our crews go through there and, and check that. Here, in a few, in a few weeks, it's probably not going to be an issue, because all those leaves will be off the trees, but. Just moving into the future, may want to cut those back.
I think, yeah, I think that was also, and I, and I guess, I don't know why I missed it, I drove up and down the road, but. Maybe I got confused with which street I was at, but I know with Vauxhall, there was some blockage of the one, I believe it was a southbound. Crosswalk sign was blocked by a tree, and the northbound seemed okay. But, yeah, but as Councilmember Lozano mentioned, it probably won't be an issue soon with the fall, but. So, do we have another council member that wants to weigh in on this discussion right now? Vice Mayor Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Selling, you know, gave us a report on that, thank you for your time. You know, that recommendation. Same thing, I'm going to piggyback what the mayor said. You know, the speeds and utilizing these, you know, that speed sign. I think that's going to help, if we have, if we might be, do this two-speed sign, it's going to use on the Corillian, or you're going to use somebody else too. But the second, the second authorized the city manager $225,000. To narrow the road, and one thing is, is it too long, because. I'm advocating, and the citizen advocating almost a six month ago, and we do not do anything. And we need to take something immediate action, and I believe in initially, I believe we turning around and going. Little bit on the other direction. In the beginning, we ask if there is on Lake Canyon, there's a lot of traffic. Or Vauxhall, it's not a traffic, I mentioned two, three times already, it's not a that. TP, the, I, I'm, I'm asking the stop shot to put a stop sign, so. Some kind of study on the stops, and I, I totally, and you know, agree with the report. But on the report, there is also a engineering judgment. So that's why we have to look map the engineering judgment. If that judgment cannot on the traffic study, not going to be on a pedestrian study. If we can put a stop sign, and same thing on a Lake Canyon. Let me a little bit, you know, go why I'm, I was asking if, if there is a control stop sign. Because right now, on the Corillian, there is a three-stop sign. And Vauxhall, when anybody coming from the Simon Horn, it's go all through, and there, there is nothing to stop. I know there might be different council member and different people have a different opinion, this is just my opinion, and that's my thoughts. That, that Vauxhall stop sign is just very within vintage oak and the Simon Home. If you look at the other stop sign on a Lake Canyon, that stop, that stops and also between. Between walnut. And, 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 and it is just when walnut and, and the other. So I'm talking, I reading all these reports, and there was a stop sign, like, and we was mentioning. Discussing last time on vintage oak. I know that study was done with developer, but when we put the stop sign, I know it's a war. Their study, but I, I, I'm sure, because then they didn't study all the Elliot home, then also include that study. On the east view, even east view is nothing, is, is not done yet. Elliot just done only six months ago, so that time. I don't know what kind of traffic was on vintage oak and Corillian. And same thing on, on, on a air car. And I like to something, you know, if, I, 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 I believe in, this is a different opinion. There is a two-stop sign, is very economic bay, put on the Corillian bay, it can solve. The traffic problem, it can so, slow down the traffic. And that's my base set, you know, say, but let me give the opportunity, other council member, I can come back with more explanation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I think what I kind of took from that was that. Vice Mayor knows that the traffic study with Vauxhall is not going to be. You know, near what Lake Canyon would, would show, but that there's still, you know, a grave concern there with, with citizens. I have a question for staff, does any of our reports that we did? I, I, I think you're. The, the traffic studies did, you know. Are conducted with the intersections, do we know how many cars are exiting? Off of Vauxhall from either the north, I'm sorry, either from the west or the east side of. Corillian onto, I mean, is there any, is any of our data been showing or show that, like, how many cars are actually coming out from? One of those subdivisions on each side onto Corillian, do we know that?
So the, the data that we looked at previously, Mayor, was from the study that. Community Development had done from the graph that they had, and I believe that data was 20, 2018 or 2019, I have to go back and verify. And I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, I can look them up here real quick. Probably, and, and get back to you in a minute or two from that study, but it was pretty low volumes, I can tell you that, yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is Clarkson, I, I'd like to interject real quick, there was a, a peak hours. Of one side, and I don't remember, I believe it was the, on the west side was peak hour was about 50 cars. And on the east side, the peak hour was around 65 or so. Pretty, pretty small amount of cars.
And that's, and that's per hour, at the peak hour?
That, that's, yes, that's the, a peak hour.
Peak hour represents about 10% of that 24-hour period of traffic.
Well, you know, it's interesting, and I know, I know when you look at. You know, I know in our staff report, it talked about the overall amount of cars on Corillian being like 7,000, or from 55 to 7, or something like that, and then. They were saying it's relatively low for a four-lane arterial, you know, compared to, you know, out in the world, which is like 40 some thousand, whatever. But, you know, what's funny is, although I guess from an engineering standpoint, you say, well, 7,000 is very much for such a large road, but. I'll be honest with you, you know, I asked several people after the last meeting that live on Corillian. That came in my, my place of business, I said, you know, you live off Corillian, how many cars do you think? And nobody was even close to seven grand, I mean, people are like 2,000, I don't know, 3,000, I mean, nobody was even, when I told them seven, they thought it was a high number. Of course, they don't, they, you know, they're not engineers and they don't know what other streets produce, but. I think, you know, again, it might only be 50, but for me to think that 50 cars pull out of there in, in a peak hour, that's, it still seems like a lot of cars. That are creeping on into that intersection, and I'm only echoing, again, I don't live there, but I'm only echoing what I've gotten from people I spoke to. That are concerned with that intersection, so. Councilmember Lozano, go ahead.
Yeah, and, and, Mr. Mayor, I think you got an answer to a question you didn't ask. So the, the way I understood your question was, how many cars are leaving the neighborhoods? East and west of Corillian at Vauxhall. I think the answer you got was the peak hour volume on Corillian. Was 53 in the southbound lanes or one of the, one of the lanes, and 60 in the other lane. Traveling north and south, is that what I heard, Mr. Clarkson?
I just pulled it up and, and now you're looking at about 200-plus vehicles in the peak hour in each direction on Corillian. That's at Vauxhall.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and when you talk about 50 cars in the peak hour, that's less than one per minute. Yeah, so and when you talk about fifty cars in the peak hour, that's less than uh, one per minute.
Yeah, so I believe Clarkson's comment was, I think he used, I think he referenced the west side. The western subdivision, it's on the west side of Krilian, there was a fifty fifty carish, whatever, coming out of that subdivision. I think if I'm, well, understood him correctly.
Yeah, yes, the quote was coming out of the subdivisions, the east and west sides.
Got it.
Okay, uh, do you have a further comment at this time, or you want me to go to the Vice Mayor, uh, Mr. Lozano? I can circle back to you if you.
Yeah, I'm 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 frozen if you can hear me, um, no, go.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna, I would like to said again, on that intersection, we are not talking about the traffic. I over there every day and I do have the experience with traffic study. I'm talking about the structure of the red road, uh, my Mark Clarkson, maybe. He he he's stressing about the traffic, he's stressing about and I'm stressing for the structure of the road. Even there is a few cars. If somebody there, they know how to get them out from Vauxhall, both side and how we get into Krilian. And that's my main uh, concern.
Yeah, I I I understand exactly what you're saying, um, traffic volume. It's kinda like reminds me of some of the intersections down in Old Town, like let me use B Street for example, or even E Street. Uh, so E and B are uncontrolled intersections versus C where you come to a stop sign. Um, you know, B, the the way this, the 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 line, the stop signs are set back when you approach that sign before you can pull out on Fourth Street. You can't see to the left, you can't see uh, northbound traffic, so you have to creep out and look, especially if there's cars parked in front of Brewster's. The same thing applies with uh, E Street, uh, you know, I have cameras down on the building that um, I own down there. And I I, you know, people just, they always come up and they just, they actually creep out into the intersection and they're looking because you can't see traffic. Um, coming past the building, you especially can't come, see it coming uh, southbound because you can't see past all the cars that are parked in front of the beauty salon or the uh, the LaHeim right there. It's just a dangerous design, and so I think what the Vice Mayor is saying here is that it's not so much the volume of traffic. It's that he's saying that wh- whether or not it's five cars that pull out there a day, or it's five hundred cars. That it's every part that pulls out, it's a danger. That I think that's, am I, am I saying that correctly, am I?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so, and again, I don't live there, so I I, you know, I very seldom have frequent that intersection. So I I don't know, I only go by, you know, I've been told, um, by people who live in that intersection. Uh, or live in those two subdivisions. But again, circling back to what I was saying earlier with Lake, Lake Park, you know, Lake Park, you know, Alcools and Lake Park, I think are the two, two most widely used crosswalks. Because they both transition kids across to school. Lake Park being, I think, is the one that to me is the most dangerous, that's the one I took the the city manager to along with Councilman Vandenberg last year. And i- in, you know, it's, it's because you come up to it, you almost feel like you should be stopping because there's this prominent, you know, striped uh, lines on the road, but you're not stopping. And so it's kind of weird that you, you think you should be stopping, but you're not. And people, you know, they're coming from Twin Cities going south and you know, you have a two and a half, you have a two-point-two mile corridor that's broken up into, you know, has three, currently three stop signs at Walnut, Vintage Oak and and um, and uh, I think that is the three or two? They're hard, no, 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 I I mean, it, the breakup, the whole length of the.
Oh, yeah, just the two.
Just the two, so I mean, two and a half miles, so you're talking about, you know, you know, you know, if you're a car guy, you know, quarter mile is like, you know, is the, is the standard race distance, right? So you know, if you have two and a half miles, you know, you basically have, uh, what is that? Four times two, so eight, so you have eight sections or is it sixteen? See, it's broken up into that many, so you have ample opportunity for people to be just pedal the metal. I I think that, you know, I think what my fellow council members are are asking for is they're not looking at it, we all can agree people run stop signs. I mean, I I I'm not gonna doubt that if you have a stop sign at any of these intersections, that there's gonna be high number of people rolling that stop sign. I mean, I see it all the time, it's, it's, it's common. But rolling a stop sign, coming up and doing a California stop or whatever, and call it even rolling it is a lot different than just blowing, coming through an intersection at, you know, forty-five miles an hour. Um, I think that my fellow council members are advocating for these stop signs at these intersections for a means of slowing traffic down to at least, you know, hopefully they're gonna make that stop. But i- it's to break that that speed, that that whole, I I, I mean, I personally don't think that if you have four controlled intersections on a two-point-two mile corridor that you're gonna dramatically, uh, you know, uh, kill the intention of that. That corridor, which is to move traffic, because I don't think we have a traffic problem as far as congestion right now. So anyways, I I see the advocacy for that, I I understand the advocacy for Vauxhall being that it's a dangerous intersection and the design of it with the rise over the road and all that is 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 not ideal. And on my part, I advocate for Lake Canyon or Lake Park, or sorry, Lake Canyon. Is because, you know, it, uh, the park and the schools and I mean, there's just a high, it's just a, it's just, we have children and I just, I think it's unsafe. Uh, I I think it needs something, so you know, I don't know where we're at with this. You know, I think, I don't know if the people that are advocating, you know, people that are signing petitions and stuff are gonna be happy with this council saying, we're gonna stripe the road next spring and then we're gonna reevaluate the thing and hopefully we can drop the speed limit down by five miles an hour and we're gonna throw a couple of speed signs up. I don't know, I don't know if that's the answer they're looking for, I I don't know, I personally would like to see something more at Lake Canyon, I feel like I'm I'm, this is not really addressing any of my concerns. Just me, at that intersection, so I don't know, if anybody else wants to weigh in? If they like what we're being presented with, or they don't, Councilman Vandenberg?
Yeah, I think realistically, we're kind of rehashing what we did last meeting. Not that they aren't good points, they are, you know, uh, I don't wanna reiterate again, personally. I'd like to see a stop sign at Vauxhall, Lake Canyon, I'd like to see restriping of the road. Uh, I'd like to see the two radars done and I but I would al- would also wanna wait on any reevaluation of traffic until several months after restriping and uh, the radar and everything has an effect on the psychology of people. Because it'll catch him off guard at first and I, I'm sure Mr. Selling would agree that it it takes some time for that effect to soak in. Regardless of what council votes on, that's just my opinion, those are the things I'd like to see, those two controlled intersections and then the restriping and the radar, I think that's, you know, I don't know if we can vote on those individually. Uh, to get a better, you know, uh, liking of what the council likes, or we can do it all at once, whatever pleases the council, it's fine with me. But I'd like to move forward.
I I would like to bring up one thing, I know that we were up last time, that just to touch on it is the light, you know, I know the staff's always talking about liabilities and with doing stop signs that are not totally justified. But I think, to be honest with you, we we've had some evidence of doing that without total justification from speed studies. I mean, vintage oak, I know right now would not meet a speed study, um, it was done for another purpose. I I think that, uh, you know, uh, there's been signs put in the county, um, I reached out to the county and asked and there was no evidence of any lawsuits whatsoever coming against people uh, because of the uh, Christianson and Twin Cities stop sign, which was put in um, by uh, Superintendent Otoli. So I think there's always that chance of litigation for somebody to come forward and say, you know, you did that stop sign without telling us. But it's, it just seems more unlikely, I think what's more likely is somebody getting in an accident and coming and saying, why didn't you do something to prevent that accident? And now my little Johnny's, you know, in the hospital or 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 my wife got in a car wreck and she's injured. And although it, you know, it it could be, you know, a one in a thousand chance. Um, I would feel really bad that we have discussions and we decide not to do anything because we were, we were more afraid of somebody suing us for a stop sign that didn't meet exactly a speed study than we were about answering uh, citizens' demands and trying to do what I think is the ultimate to keep people safe. I I feel like if you weigh one against the other, there's gonna be negatives and everything, but I just don't, I don't like that philosophy of saying no. I I just for fear of that, because I don't think that you're seeing that happen a lot. Uh, I don't think people are just out there, you know, uh, protesting and suing cities for speed sign or stop signs that are, you know, weren't, I I mean, I just, I mean, it's in the, it's in the essence of public safety. It's for keeping our children safe that are crossing the school and crossing the park. And and I I feel like, I don't know if I can look somebody in the eye if something were to happen and say, you know, sorry, we just, you know, we're just really concerned about. You know, I don't know. I'm kinda with, I'm kinda with Councilman Vandenberg, to be honest with you, I like the restriping, I think it's a good idea for next year. Ultimately, um, I like the speed signs, I like that. But um, I ultimately think that we need to do more at those two intersections. And um, I, for one, would support all of the things, the three things that staff recommended. But I also would uh, would like to see controlled intersection at those two locations. So that's, that's my feeling on it, and I don't know if that's gonna, you know, get any traction or not, but I would support that. Councilman Papano.
See, I would agree with Councilmember Vandenberg, we are rehashing the last meeting. Would agree with uh, the mayor and and Councilmember Vandenberg that these three things brought forward in this um, are all good ideas. I think it's a good place to start and then allow us to reevaluate. And I would certainly be in favor of approving this resolution tonight. And if uh, you know, need be, we can rehab the discussion of uh, individual stop signs or perhaps, uh, you know, additional crossing or uh, uh, measures to, you know, address those two intersections. Um, but, you know, all that being said, I think that what we have in front of us tonight is a great starting point and I think we should uh, get going with it.
Uh, Councilman Lozano, you had your hand up next, go ahead.
Yeah, and I apologize, my, every time my video is on, it, my Zoom freezes up and I get inter- so I'm, I'm leaving my video off for now. Um, I would like to hear if there are any public comments on this, we had a public comment last time and we had a petition of fifty-something people that signed a petition and and uh, that's what we're here for, it's here from the public.
Okay, sure, uh, do we have any public comment at the time, Tina?
We do have one hand raised online.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Jerry Sour.
Mr. Soder, go ahead.
Go ahead, now mute your mic, you have five minutes.
Hello, good afternoon, or good evening, um, it's your friendly neighborhood Krilian Boulevard commenter here. Appreciate the council's review of this and the work that city staff has done to try to find a solution um, within the city rather than looking to um, some of the other proposals. I just had a um, couple of comments that I wanted to share, one is um, just concerns about the lane restriping and the width. I just wanna make sure that we're not creating sort of another traffic problem, you know, as the area gets developed. You know, there could potentially be higher truck traffic and some other things. I know we even have farm vehicles that use Krilian Boulevard now occasionally, at least I've seen or or hear them. Um, since I live, my backyard is basically off Krilian, but it's only at the two-lane section. So I just wanna make sure that we're not creating a a potential traffic issue with with reducing the lane width by by too much, especially in comparison to some of the other lane widths on the surrounding roads like Walnut. Um, you know, that that we're gonna have twelve-foot lanes there and ten-foot lanes on Krilian. Um, my second concern is the stop sign at Vauxhall, uh, again, that's the intersection that I pull out of to to leave my home. Um, and my concern is just that I haven't heard addressed is the um, blind uh, rise. So that's been presented as a um, a a concern for people pulling out. So I'm on the east side, so say I'm pulling out to make a left turn to go south on Krilian. But my concern would be stopped traffic at this new stop sign that can't see cars backed up one or two, uh, you know, over the hill. Because now there's a stop sign there, so that's, I just wanna make sure that we're not trading one problem for another. So just a couple of thoughts, um, as far as the, as the proposal, so uh, thank you for 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 listening.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Soder, I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
So do we have uh, any other comment at this time?
There are no other hands raised online.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor Sandu.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, there are a couple thing I would like to mention. Uh, one thing, uh, Councilmember Lozano, uh, he asked uh, where all the petitioner are. But I'm going to read very brief of what uh, the petitioner said. With the limited stop, Krilian Boulevard has become a race for many drivers. This route is used to funnel kids to area school and has a true fear the resident to reach shopping and resources at the north and south area of God. It's also a well-travel biking and bike bike path for local residents. The blind corner at Vauxhall Avenue is especially dangerous as drivers cannot see dust in or bike ride due to upward slope of the street and pedestrian cannot see cars coming their way when traveling south and there is test by the petition. And these people are very reasonable, they don't wanna come to the council meeting again and again. And especially they give us something written, put me in notice, I gave to the staff. And and the other thing on the stop, uh, on on the stop uh, stop sign. And I see on the report, uh, they said there is a lawsuit. I will ask the staff, how many, because you know, when vintage oak, when on on a vintage oak, they put the stops and there was no threshold, they just the report from the developer. So now how many lawsuit we have in this city regarding to the stop sign?
Uh, I don't know that we have. Vice Mayor, uh, lawsuits from vintage oak, my recollection from what Mr. Forrest indicated last time. There was a traffic analysis that was done and there were supposed to have been four exits from that development. And one was closed off and turned into a pedestrian bridge. And so the traffic analysis was revised and it reflected the need for a stop sign there. Now again, as has been noted, that was predicated on, you know, expectations of the east view. Uh, you know, development primarily and and maybe others, I don't have the details on that study, what and all they took into account. And and the thing about those things is when you have it and, you know, you go through the development process and and you have a traffic analysis that reflects, you know, the need for a control in an intersection like that. It it is predicated on on development occurring, now no one knows when that'll happen. But you know, it's it's expected in a reasonable time, now here we are, whatever ten-plus years hence, it hasn't happened. So I mean, with the counts warranted, I don't know, without studying it, it may, it may not. Uh, the reality is, is is we are defensible legally uh, because of that basis. And and that's the concern is putting stop signs in without some sort of defense uh, of meeting a warrant or, you know, or being close enough that engineering judgment can can uh, push it over the threshold. We are subjecting the city to liability and it's our, you know, uh, charge of staff is to protect the city from potential liability. So, yeah, it doesn't happen very often, but it only takes one, I think. Uh, I think it was actually Councilmember Papano noted something in Sacramento, I was unfamiliar with and I think it was a pretty hefty settlement. So, so anyway, that's, that's kinda where we're at, so.
Well, Mr. Selling, I'm talking about, I'm not talking about the other city, I'm talking about the this city. Did anybody aware of that, we have any lawsuit with any stops out in the city?
I'm not aware of any, but I don't know the entire history of the city, so I would defer to others, perhaps city manager or or city attorney.
I think it's gonna be difficult to say because a lot of the staff, especially our legal staff and even our city manager haven't been here long enough to really know the history of that. Um, I think that's something they'd have to dig up.
No, no, we, I I'm I'm talking about, we we all are careful staff and as a council, we are responsible, but we should not be that afraid. If we're doing the right thing, we should be afraid, you know, out there, anybody should do anybody. But it depends upon is is it reasonable or what's in it? Yes, I'm just sending that message to everybody.
You know, you said something just a minute ago, Mr. Clarkson, or sorry, Mr. Clarkson, Mr. Selling, you said that you are charged with defending the city on engineering stuff and it only takes one. And what I immediately thought of was, do you're right? And what we are charged with is looking out for our citizens as council members and when it comes to accidents, it only takes one. And it's someone's life, not someone's lawsuit. I just can't reiterate that enough. And it's someone's life, not someone's lawsuit. Um, I just can't reiterate that enough. So I, I don't know. You know, I, I, I'm, I'm not comfortable with approving the resolution as it is. I feel like I want to see more out of this. Um, I don't know if we could uh, you know, maybe have it to a consensus where we can bring this back with. I, I mean, obviously, any, any controlled intersection has to have a cost analysis. So uh, I mean, that's obviously not included in this resolution. So I don't know, you know, off the top of my head, what, 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 you know, putting a stop sign up and, and strapping on the road uh, cost-wise entails and what that is. I, I'm only just trying to think of where we're gonna conclude with this here. I don't know. I feel like we're going around and around. Miss Rose, go ahead.
We have public comment.
Okay, let's, let's hear from some more public. Go ahead.
Um, Mister Chris Shamber. One second. Go ahead. You have five minutes. Go ahead and unmute your mic. Thank you.
Yes, uh, thank you. I've had to step away, so I apologize if uh, anything here has already been mentioned by the public. Um, obviously, uh, I do live in the area around Carillion. I feel like as we address this issue with the striping, with the signage, uh, with potential stop signs, um, I have to echo what some of Mayor Farmer said and not lose sight of the fact that this is an arterial passageway for traffic through our neighborhood. It was designed to be of a certain width, designed to be uh, able to handle a certain number of vehicles. And if we're dealing with a speed enforcement problem, I feel we should absolutely a- address that. If we do not like the fact that it is an arterial street and, and some citizens in the area don't like that it is a major thoroughfare, um, that, that's a city planning issue and it's a little late uh, for a road that's been in place for a couple of decades now to, to really start addressing that. Uh, when it comes to the restriping, um, I feel like we have to think about the larger vehicles in town, whether they be buses, uh, fire engines or such. Uh, some of the larger vehicles uh, can be nine to almost ten feet in width. Uh, if we narrow down the street uh, lineage, you know, the, the marking delineators to that, uh, we're gonna have vehicles that are, are potentially unable to stay within that lane without a little bit of drift here or there, uh, which can also create a little bit of a safety hazard. I feel like if there's speed enforcement issue here has resulted in accidents, injuries that we need to address, um, we should, but I also feel like uh, over a hundred thousand dollars on narrowing of the of the stripes on the road to create the, the psychological slowing effect, and I do understand how that would work. Uh, I feel like the city has a lot of needs from a public work standpoint and a road maintenance standpoint. And I, I don't know that that would be something that I as a resident would feel would be the best use. I feel like if we have to enforce people that are going over the posted or safe speed limit, then that's an enforcement issue. I feel if we don't like the, the road being utilized the way that it was designed, um, I, I don't know that a dislike of something is a strong enough reason to put this much city resources behind change. With that, I appreciate your time and your work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Do we have any other public comment?
We do have Mister Jerry Sauter again. Would you like to allow him additional time?
That'd be fine.
Mister Sauter, go ahead and unmute your mic. Mister Sauter, go ahead and unmute your mic.
Seems like he's having some technical difficulties.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll come back to him in a minute. Mister Sauter, if you're listening to us, um, you, you, we can't hear you, so um, we'll come back and call on you in just a moment. Councilman Vandenberg, I know City Manager Heinz has his hand up. I will uh, hear from Councilmember and then we'll go to the City Manager and then we'll go back to public comment.
I, I would just like to know per rule what our options are to vote on. Can we, you know, uh, there was more than, there was something proposed and there was other options laid below that. Can we choose anything we want, one at a time, you know, just so moving forward, we do the right thing the first time?
Yeah. Good question. Uh, I'll take a stab at addressing that. The resolution has a few different categories in it based on staff's recommendation. So the council has the ability to approve uh, one of those, two of those, three of those, none of those. And, and some modifications uh, within that structure. Um, you know, for example, if I wanted to authorize additional money for the restriping design, you know, et cetera. Um, and then as far as other, other measures, um, those would have to come back to the, to the council, uh, and also be separately agendized for other, other, other improvements or actions. But as far as what's being proposed tonight by staff, um, this council can approve some of it, none of it, um, or all of it.
But not in addition to. I think he's looking for. I just want to be clear, Frank.
Correct.
So, okay.
So Frank, we cannot modify, you said?
You can modify, you can modify the resolution um, based upon the categories that are in it. But if there was a completely new uh, action item.
But the stop sign, stop sign is not a new action. There's stops and it starts from the beginning.
Right, that, that is.
Control, control stop, control act, i- 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 is not a new, this is, this is start on this uh, uh, subject.
Yeah, the staff report does talk about all the tools that are used and they're clearly mentioning, you know, everything from roundabouts to crucial. I'm, I'm clear that.
But the recommendation contains those three items. And the recommendation is based on the conversation from the very last council meeting when council directed us to come back with these three options. They did not direct us to come back with issues related to stop signs. Now, if we want to table this issue and have, allow us to essentially rehash a council meeting that we had a month ago, we'll be happy to dust off that staff report and bring it back to council. Uh, because we're back to square one again.
Well, I think. Clearly stop signs mentioned adamantly at the last council meeting.
Well, I'll take a listen to the tape and, and see, but that's not our understanding and I don't believe that's reflected in the minutes.
And then especially Mister Heinz, uh, we ask for bring staff is a different option. That's not, uh, but the option, the option, the stop sign, we mentioned in the beginning, that option does not in the report.
We responded to the very last council meeting when council directed us to come back with these alternatives. Now, if, now, if the, if that's changed, then we will, councils, uh, council is free to reject all three of these and we'll bring these items back at another time.
Yeah, I think what we, what was, what was directed was the staff was gonna come back with some options. We didn't specify specific options. We asked for them to come back with what options they would bring. We were looking to see what they would come back with. I think what's missing here from the staff report would be, we can do A, B, C, and D, or any combination or other. And the other's not there. And I mean, for you to sit here and tell us, not, not to be disrespectful, for you to sit here and tell us that we didn't discuss stop signs for probably better part of almost two hours last time, I think would be a little bit unfair.
This was the direction that you gave us last time.
Uh, Mister Selling, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
Well, I think Councilmember Lozano was ahead of me. Okay, I was just gonna clarify. The direction that I heard last time was to, we gave you preliminary information on those intersections. And, and it was if you wanted us to do a full, you know, uh, evaluation of those intersections to see if we could uh, meet any stop sign warrants. So, so that's why we're bringing back to basically approve, giving us direction to do a full analysis, so.
Um, Councilman Lozano and then Councilman Papinow.
Yeah, if I could just chime in here on uh, last meeting and, and what we got. You know, honestly, when I got the staff report um, on Thursday night, this is exactly what I was expecting. Um, I, I, we talked about recent, we talked about a lot of things. At the end of the day, at the end of that item, um, we asked them to bring back restriping. We asked them to bring back two trailers, speed trailers. And with the direction that once those things are in place, we would allow for a few months for them to take effect and then uh, come back. Um, uh, so that, that, that was my understanding. Um, quite honestly, I'm, I was a little surprised uh, that we're spending this much time on it. I mean, it's an important issue, but this is exactly the same discussion we had last two weeks ago. And uh, and they gave, they, the staff in the recommendation gave us what we asked for. And now we're asking for more, which I don't have a problem with and I don't have a problem tabling it. Um, but, but I think it should be noted that uh, there was no, uh, at least it appears to, from my perspective, there was no, no intentional leaving out of information or recommendations on staff's part. Uh, this is what we asked for. So that's all I have.
Councilmember Papinow?
Yeah, I was basically gonna say the same thing. That's my precise recollection. I remember uh, expecting these three items to come back and my specific question was that they would be in this order so that we wouldn't be doing s- uh, speed studies or surveys or whatever prior to the other adjustments of movable radar signs and the, the restriping being in place. Because, you know, we can't study what we don't have the results of yet. So I mean, and as Councilmember Lozano said, this is, this is what I was expecting. I, I thought we implicitly asked for this and that this is a good starting point. And we would move on with the, with the results and consider additional measures as needed. And we did discuss a lot of additional measures that were possible. That's my recollection and I, as I stated earlier, I do think this is an excellent starting point to address the multitude of problems and I would hope we get going on it sooner than later.
Well, I think uh, we did ask for the restriping to be brought back and the speed signs were one of the things. But there was also clearly something from Mike Selling and I'm, obviously you can't refer to the minutes because they're not verbatim minutes. So you're not gonna have the complete discussion. You'd have to watch the video. But um, we asked whether they were, said, he said that we could see what other things we could do to help, uh, you know, make uh, Vauxhall safer without, uh, you know, without doing a stop sign. Well, I'm not seeing that. I'm, I'm seeing two speed signs on a street that's two and a half miles wide or long. I, I, I mean, I just don't think that we're really addressing Vauxhall. We're not addressing Lake Canyon. I, I, I just don't think so. And, and I, excuse me, just for a second. And honestly, if everybody's, if anybody here is upset that we're talking about the same things over and over, well, maybe if staff was, uh, listened to a little more, went at least three of us ad- adamantly, you know, were petitioning for last time. Um, you know, and, and really adamant about, but we, we said, okay, fine, let's see what staff comes back with. But you're, it seems like people are upset that we're talking about this again. Well, you know, I'll, I'll keep talking about it every meeting if I have to until staff brings us back something that we're asking for. I, I honestly, I, I think it's a failure of, of, of staff understanding exactly what some of us council are wanting. I mean.
That is, that is absolutely unfair. And anytime you put staff out on, on notice like that, that's inappropriate. Totally inappropriate. Thank you.
Mister Lozano, point of order. I was speaking. I think you'll get appropriate, you'll get a chance to speak. Okay, what I'm saying is, and, and you don't need to defend the staff. They're all big boys and girls. That, and, and their, their duty is to, to come to us with things that we, we are asking for. I see zero in here for Lake Canyon, which is a, uh, which is an intersection that I was adamantly um, concerned with. I see zero in here that addresses Vauxhall. I see things that address Carillion as a, as, as a whole with speed. Uh, and, and uh, and with the striping, but I don't see anything that address those things. So to say that, that the staff brought us back exactly what we were asking for, I think is unfair. Mister Selling?
Yeah, maybe just to clarify. So a couple of things, without collecting data first, you know, we can't just willy-nilly say we're gonna put a flashing beacon here or whatever it may be, a stop sign. So we've got to collect the data first. And that's what that third item is, is addressing Vauxhall and Lake Canyon. Um, the other piece of it is if we do the restriping, we will slow down the traffic on Carillion, which will improve safety at both of those intersections for pads as well as vehicles approaching intersection. So um, I guess I would just say that there is something in it for those intersections. Thanks.
Councilman Vandenberg and then Councilmember Lozano, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So the bottom line is it's a very good lesson on being clear at the end of a topic. Uh, the fact of the matter is, we can approve that they, the three items that are recommended uh, or not, and that is the vote. Uh, if somebody chooses to request something at the end of the meeting, that is what the time is for. And then I do believe we can add, maybe I need clarification on that. We can add a stop sign if we so vote. Yes or no?
Uh, not to this item as, as.
No, that's, that's not what I mean. I apologize. I mean, if we bring it back as an action item or a stop sign at A and B Street, we can have a stop sign at A and B Street, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Think as long as the public is duly noticed of all of the pros and cons and limitations of putting a stop sign there that's unwarranted, I think we can put, we'll be happy to bring that back as an action item. We'll also be bringing back uh, probably an appropriation of some kind. Because given that that stop sign is unwarranted, I will not require our city engineers to sign off on that stop sign. So we'll probably have to bring in a separate consulting firm and let them do that work for us if they're willing to sign off on that sign. Cause I will not have these gentlemen jeopardize their licenses or their livelihood for this.
In the past two meetings, there has been plenty of engineering justification for uh, both those intersections. It was clearly done in the past when it was convenient for the city. No offense, but I'm just stating what was stated in the previous meeting. I don't want to drag it on. I'm just saying.
But the present.
Previous justification when it was convenient, so.
The present staff wasn't, uh, that's, the present group of staffers weren't doing that. Aren't, didn't have anything to do with that. We will make sure that there is integrity in the process going forward. Can't speak for that city manager, can't speak for that public works director, can't speak for this city manager and this public works director. Everything we do going forward will have integrity and it will meet state standard. Thanks.
Uh, Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. I, I don't necessarily have a problem having this discussion. Um, the, the, the point I was trying to make is that in my mind, the three items that were being brought back were exactly what we asked for them to bring back to us for consideration. Um, and so I, I, I will defend anybody, whether it's you, Mister Mayor, or, or the city manager or any other staff member when I feel that, that uh, information is not correct. Um, and so with that, I will uh, move the item as presented by staff for approval. And uh, would uh, hopefully get a second and get a vote.
The item has been moved forward as existing by Councilman Lozano. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
I would like to make an alternate motion. I make a motion that we tabled item with uh, there was, there was a, there was actually, and it, there was a request last time for data to be provided in that two-week span, and I didn't see that data. I would like to table this item to have uh, an option added for the uh, controlled intersection option at either or both. To be added to this discussion. That's my, that's my motion.
I have a second.
Uh, Mister, Mister Mayor, may I uh,
Please.
It sounds like what you're suggesting is in addition to, or obviously tabling this item and then coming back with uh, including the intersections, uh, controlled intersections that'll later date. I would rec, first of all, we have a motion on the table that has a second. So we have a little bit of a parliamentary issue with having two competing motions at the same time, because we have a second. So one option would be to withdraw your motion and ask um, for, for to staff to bring that bu- back up at the future agenda item portion of this, of this, of this evening. Um, or, you know, or take your chances with the motion on the floor. But um, there was a first, there was a first and a second.
So for clarification, when someone makes a motion, uh, a second motion has to be made immediately. So because someone jumped in fast and said second, then now I don't have the opportunity to make a second motion?
Yeah, that's the motion on the, that's the, that's, there's, there's an opportunity for discussion. There's an opportunity for discussion. And then the, the person that made the motion could with, withdraw the motion. So that's what we're having here, but to just throw. Could with withdraw the motion. So that's what we're having here, but to just throw another motion. When there's already a motion on the floor, that has to get discussed first.
So I, my misunderstanding is if there's, there's a motion made, there can be a secondary motion. The secondary motion is voted on first. So how could we vote on the second motion first? If it's not allowed to be before the first one's voted on.
Yeah, so the 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 the. The alternative motion that you're making is essentially a sec- a secondary motion. That's what you're saying.
Yes.
Okay, then then yeah, that that's 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 appropriate.
And I have a second on my motion, which means that it would be voted on first and if not successful, then we would go back to the original motion. I want to be clear.
Yes.
That's clear.
So is it clear what my secondary motion is? My secondary motion is to bring the item back with additional options to include. Intersection control at Vauxhall and Lake Canyon, either and or both, but those need to be options.
I'm gonna do second.
Is that clear, Tina?
Yes, additional options to have the controlled intersections at Corillian and Fox Hall and Corillian at Lake Canyon intersections.
Um, so Councilman Lozano, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I know what I'm voting on here. So um. Your motion doesn't include any of the three staff recommendations?
It it does, but in addition to the, those addition, those are being brought back, but in addition to those, we want further options. Is that, is that, is that clear? You're froze up again, I think, Rich, on your video.
Yeah, I've I've killed the video for right now. Um, hold on one second.
Sure.
Well, wait, sorry about that. Um, okay, so. So the difference between my motion and yours is that we have a further discussion about having controlled inner. Controlled devices at two, two, one or either or both of those intersections that you mentioned, meaning box hall and. Uh, Lake Canyon.
Yeah, so in addition, so in addition to what they've already brought us, the restriping and the the speed signs and those things that are in this. This recommended action, I would like to see additional options because clearly there's no other option except for us to choose from those, those right now and and. And I think some of us are asking for additional.
I I don't have a problem coming back and having that discussion, but I. With the, if no one is opposed to these three items, I don't understand why we would hold these three up and delay it more. Uh, yet to not uh to have a another discussion about controlled intersections. I I'm good with that.
I think I I see your point. Um, I also don't want to see us approve this tonight and then. And then, uh, you know, it'd be like four months from now when we bring back the other item because. That's what I'm afraid is gonna happen.
Well, I I don't make the agenda. I just go off of it when I, when I'm, when I speak with the city manager about what's coming up. Um, I I would just encourage the city manager to bring that back sooner than later, um, like he's done with other items. Um, I don't, I don't know that that'll, I mean, I don't know. I don't know what they, I know what the near future looks like. I don't know what four months from now looks like on our agendas.
It won't take four months.
By rule, we have to vote on the motions put on the table, so.
And and by rule, we can have discussion.
Correct.
Absolutely. I was just making that point that we can't just drop and now we need to vote on that, that second topic as just a point of order.
And just to, just to be clear, and I apologize, Mayor, but the motion you made is the mo- a substitute motion.
Yes, substitute.
Okay, and that, that's, that's where the confusion was, just in in my, in my brain. Uh, it's this, it's a substitute motion and we deal with the substitute motion first.
And to Councilman Lozano's uh. Comment, um, he's, what he's suggesting is something that would possibly encourage. You know, me or whatever, somebody to resend their. That's what he's suggesting.
Right, essentially he's copy, he's right. He's making votes to get a no decision by the council, so we move back to the first motion.
And I also like to encourage the council, we can take that action, hold together.
So would anybody, uh, any of the, any, any of you council members that were in favor of? Uh, you know, wanting to see additional things, how do you feel about uh approving? These tonight and then. Going back to, you know, giving direction at the end of the meeting to bring back an item for the controlled. I, I don't know, I'd rather. I think it's a really on all in one discussion. I don't think if it's not gonna be that long. I I don't know. I mean, the restriping can't happen till next year anyway. We're talking about the speed signs that would be, would be postponed.
So the, when the item comes back, we can anticipate at least another hour and fifteen minutes of conversation about it. Even no matter how pointed it is, it's still going to take time. So I don't, I don't, I I heard you mention, Mayor, that it might be a quick conversation. It's not gonna be a quick conversation. It'll be at least an hour, perhaps an hour and a half.
Well, you know what? I think in the.
I'm just telling you what reality is based on the last three meetings we've had regarding Corillian.
Yeah, well, you know, it's been a hot topic for many years before you were here, so.
Understood, but all I know is the last three meetings, the average time has been about an hour to an hour and a half.
So reflecting back to what Mister Shamber said, how, you know, he had some concerns about the restriping and all that. I think, I think, you know, with with that being said, and I think that um, I I although I do like the re- this restriping, I do think that. You know, maybe we need to take a breath of fresh air and say, okay, what exactly combination of items do we need to do? I I think I'm gonna stick with, I'm gonna keep my motion on the floor uh and bring it all back as one piece. Because I I I don't, I don't think I'm ready to approve all these three things tonight and then come back with additional. So I I'm gonna keep my motion. As it is, and I'd like to, uh, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to do a roll call.
I'm sorry, could I get who seconded it?
Mister San, Vice Mayor Sandu.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
No.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
No.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Uh, motion is approved. Three to two. We're moving on to item I now.
Yes.
Communicate. Tina, do we have any this evening?
Uh, none this evening.
Thank you. Item J, City Clerk's report.
Nothing.
Okay. Item K, comments by staff, Mister Heinz.
Yes, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, I'll keep my comment short. Uh, last meeting, the uh council wanted me to. Check in on a couple of mask mandates um from the state and the county. And although I mentioned it earlier in this meeting on October twentieth, a joint statement was issued by the California Health and Human Services Agency Secretary. And the State Department of Health Director, um reaffirming the state's approach to preventing COVID nineteen in schools and protecting our students. Health continuing the state's successful masking requirements for K twelve, K through twelve settings. And essentially those masking requirements require face coverings in K through twelve schools, childcare and other youth settings. So we've heard a lot of uh conversation in the community about folks who are uh not comfortable with. Um, having their kids in recreational basketball, uh because the county is requiring us to. Um, uh, ask the kids to wear masks while they were playing indoor basketball. And so we've been thinking internally as a staff and so uh Director Solis and I are actually looking into. Um, perhaps holding basketball outdoors during the spring and summer. We're checking with the county and preliminarily, the county is okay with us doing things outdoors unmasked. So we may be uh revealing a new program during the spring and summer, which allows those kids. That may not be able to participate in the current recreational basketball leagues to participate in the spring and summer. Basketball. So um while it's not the perfect answer, uh for those folks who have concerns. Uh, we believe it does give the kids an opportunity to play basketball outside and um and also allow the parents to. Um, essentially um uh not require their kids to wear masks. So we're working on that right now. We hope that it's a happy compromise. Um, and hopefully the county won't um have any issues with it. Other than that, I'll pass it on to Director Solis and um see if he has any comments for the group.
Um, yeah. There's a. So I just want to talk about the spectacular movie night that we had on the twenty second. It was a great event. Jackie and our staff did a great job in doing that. We're accepting parade entries for the lighting of the night and um want to shout out to Armando Morales for his. Uh, continued hard work in the landscaping uh of the city. Um, parks and streetscapes. Uh, we're doing a hard pruning now. Um, on Corillian, our one year pruning. So if you see things cut back a little bit, um. It, uh, that's the reason. And then uh, as one of the council members said that we can speak up for ourselves. I just want you to say that um. Some of the comments that were said tonight. Were. Hurtful towards me and my and our staff, so I just want you to know that.
Thank you, uh Director Solis. Um, I concur. Let's go with Public Works Director Mike Selling to see if he has any more else, anything else to say. He's had a busy night.
Yeah, well, I'm not done yet. Um, no, I I just wanted to, first of all, um, uh, give kudos to our, our streets and utility staff. For responding to that storm a week ago, Sunday, that was, uh, I don't know how many people paid attention or not, but. Uh, you know, being the the public works guys, we do, and that was a greater than a two hundred year event. And what that means is that was a storm that occurs. Once every two hundred plus years. So um, so it was that big. In fact, it was so big, it's the biggest storm recorded in the entire Sacramento. Area history, which goes back to the eighteen, right around eighteen eighty, so almost a hundred and fifty years. So anyway, um, you know, just hats off to them. Uh, I know that there was a lot of localized flooding and we got, uh, I think thirty some calls. Uh, and uh, you know, obviously the storm drains aren't designed for a two hundred plus year storm. Even if you start in a brand new city, it wouldn't even be designed for anything close to that. So usually it's about a fifty year storm. So. So anyway, just again, uh, kudos to them. I was on the phone all night and I wanted to give a appreciation to uh Ms. Mendez too for getting the word out and stuff. On sandbags and things too. Uh, she was, uh, she was posting things on social media as uh as information was coming in. So that was very helpful, I think. For us and for the community. So uh with that, um, and then just to touch on, you know, I know, Mayor, you commented about, yeah, we're supposed to bring back some data. And I apologize for that. It was a short timeframe. We had a camera out and we did get some preliminary information. But it's pretty anecdotal and it and it really wasn't um good quality data. So um, that's why I didn't give you any information on on the data piece, so. Uh, but anyway, we'll uh, we'll be uh looking to do some more on that. So, thanks.
And Mike, um, hats off to you and your team. Well done. Mike mentioned he was on the phone a lot that night and s- and some of those calls were with me. And um, so I heard, learned firsthand uh what Mike and his team were doing. Uh, so job well done to you, Mike, and the rest of your team. Uh, you got the city through this. Amy, I'm sorry, uh, man, our economic direct development director, um. Or a manager, Amy Mendez, thank you so much for all the work you've done and gotten, getting the word out on social media and making sure. That our citizens were informed during this whole situation of what was going on and what the city was doing. And also a big shout out to. Chief Kalanowski, because I'm sure the Gulf PD were, had a big role in this as well. So. Job well done. I think as a city, we responded very well to a two hundred year storm and I'm so proud. Of all of the folks that were involved in getting, getting this taken care of and protecting our citizens. So Mike, thank you. Uh, let's go with um Human Resources Director Stephanie Van Steine.
I have no update this evening. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you. Let's go with Police Chief Brian Kalanowski.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, the mayor did mention that this last week, we had a swearing in of new employees and promotion of. Of individuals, uh professional staff individuals who were fortunate enough to promote uh within the organization. And so we were able to recognize those folks and we could not do that without the support of Armando and his group. And getting the portable stage out and other things that were required, uh blowing leaves from the two hundred year storm and other things that were not planned in their workday. So thank you uh to um both Armandos uh in making that happen. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Let's go with uh Community Development Director Craig Hoffman.
Good evening. Uh, nothing for tonight other than to say we will be holding a planning commission meeting uh next week. And that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, let's go with our city attorney, Frank Splendorio.
I have nothing uh more to add, nothing to report. Thank you.
Okay, busy night, Frank. Um, let's go with our Economic Development Manager, Amy Mendez.
Good evening. Um, I appreciate the kudos in regards to the uh social media updating during the storm, but besides that. I don't have an update for this evening. Thank you.
Alrighty, let's go with our city clerk, Sina Hubert. Any updates?
No updates.
Okay, and our executive assistant, Rose Rodaker, any, any updates?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right, Mister Mayor, that concludes staff comments.
All right, thank you. Move on to item L, comments by city council members for future agenda items. Start with our Vice Mayor, Mister Sandu.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, first of all, thank you for the staff, especially the help on the storm, two year. Storm, every department help on the storm. Thank you for all the staff. And I also like uh to thank you for city manager. Uh, he was very proactive on that, uh, the storm. So uh, I really thank you. A lot of citizens, they have a concern, but then they said, oh, it's been take care of that. Thank you for everybody. And I also like to thank you for public comment, especially Joshua Azwa. Uh, Jerry Saurer, Chris Chamber and Bob Bailey. And their comment is concerned and their comment is very important. Public comment is always top of my list. And I also attend the guard police departments, foreign in ceremony. Uh, and and promotions. And thank you for Police Chief Brian Kalanowski. He arranged that um. Event. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Vice Mayor. Councilmember Papino.
Yeah, as noted, uh, hats off to all the staff, everybody that uh dealt with the storm, uh, safety and then the cleanup afterwards. It was uh quite impressive. You guys did a great job. Um, also, uh, hats off since the last meeting, um, they had the ribbon cutting the Galtine Center and I was able to go to that. And uh phenomenal job. So hats off not only to the teen center and their board. But to the chamber and uh many people that have supported them and and getting that thing going. It's uh, it's pretty exciting. So that.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, congratulations, Chief Kalanowski, uh, and to all the staff that got promotions the other day. It was also very good to see. Officer Herrera uh walking around. Uh, it was very encouraging and uh I was. Quite curious how the city would fare under such a heavy rainfall and I have to say I'm quite impressed. That this little old town did quite well in a two hundred year storm. There was some flooding in certain areas and some complaints, but. All in all, I I think we did quite a fine job. So thank you for everybody involved. Uh, good work. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, just a couple of things. I'm just gonna echo uh what some of my colleagues have said about the storm, uh, including the mayor who was out at. Uh reportedly at uh midnight thirty or so checking on things. So appreciate you going out there and doing what you do. Um, but yeah, they, the staff did an awesome job and and I did get some complaints uh about some localized flooding, but you know. Uh, we had a lot of citizens going out and clearing uh grates uh for leaves from grates and. And I don't know that that would have really helped in this particular issue, but there was just so much water coming all at once. So. Uh, good job uh for everybody um that was on that. I also want to bring up something. Um, the couple, about a week ago, um, I saw where um. Somebody had dumped like a truckload full of of trash on the side of a roadway and um. So instead of doing my normal texting the city manager or or Mike selling. Or Mike selling or somebody, I went to the Galt Connect app and. And I'll say that it was cleaned up within a day. I mean, I I I didn't check the rest of that day. I went back the following day. In the early morning and like twenty four hours later, and and it was cleaned up. The the only criticism I have, if it is one or or something we can improve on, is. On the app, I received the response that it was taken care of several days later. And I don't know if it's a glitch in the system, but it was certainly cleaned up right away. And it just took a few days for for the, you know how it sends you a. A response saying that it's been cleared cleaned up. So I don't know if it's something we need to check, if it was just my phone or or something, but. It it took a few days, so. But but appreciate the work that that the staff did to get that all cleaned up. And then tomorrow at one o'clock, I'm hosting a. Unmet transit needs meeting on Zoom. And it's through CCOG and taking a look, it's a hearing that we have to do every year to talk about. Paratransit needs and things like that, so if you're interested, log on at noon. You can find the link on the CCOG website or email me and I can shoot that out to you. And then lastly, I just want to let everybody know that I was recently appointed to the. League of California Cities Community Service, Community Services Policy Committee. And what this is, is a policy committee where we meet like four times a year. And it addresses policy issues regarding interests of cities, right? So public or community services would be childcare, parks and recreation, libraries, cultural arts and communities and human services. Programs, so if anything comes up throughout the next year, let me know in those in those realms and. And we can forward on information to the League of Cities to take policy positions on that, so. That is about it. I appreciate the time and thank you to all the public comment. Even those who, and I just want to make a a point here, even those who have have signed petitions. I honor that, and no matter what, when the discussion happens, I think it's important to address those issues as well. As those that call in, so thank you and everybody have a great evening.
All right, thank you, sir. Since we were talking about the storm. Yeah, I want to thank Public Works Team or Parks Team, whoever was involved that night. I mean, I saw Parks, I saw Public Works guys out there, but I'm sure there was more people behind it. You you know, it went early in the evening. It was pretty dicey. I was out several times, and thank you, Rich, for mentioning that. I appreciate that. But, you know, once they started getting caught up, and I know PD is probably overwhelmed with phone calls as well. Once they started catching up, it was it was a big deal, and and when I was out like the last time, I think it was like twelve thirty. You know, there was like literally one spot that was still flooded pretty bad, but all the other ones have been taken care of, and so I was actually shocked that they had been. They were just completely cleared, so. You know, those guys out there in knee deep water, all hours of night getting getting poured on, you know, I was I was sure to tell to stop and roll my window down and tell them thank you and. And so thank you for all that, and thank you to Amy and city manager for being responsive. With the social media out there, you know, things started getting a little out of hand online. People ask a question, so. Thank you for jumping in and doing that and directing people in the appropriate way. I just want to mention a couple of events. The Fourth Street Halloween event was very successful. I think we had seven or eight hundred people, as what the projection was. Down here, the second we did it, thank thanks to all the businesses that participated. Huge turnout, was a great time for not only the Fourth Street, we had businesses that came from. I know Councilman Lozano was out there with his wife, and there was businesses all up and down, and it was just, I was actually, I anticipated a huge turnout. But I actually exceeded my expectations, so great event, much needed in in the time we're in, and I look forward to doing that next year. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention an event that's gonna happen before we have our next council meeting. Is a doing, working with the Sacramento Public Library, which I serve on their board. They're helping sponsor an event that's being co-hosted by myself and. The local news anchor, Letizia Ordez, she's actually a children's book author for bilingual books. And recently bumped into her at an event, and we kind of came up with a brainstorm and idea to do something she had done in El Grove recently. Where we have a can outdoor read along event. It's gonna be at the 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 Galt Library on the thirteenth of November from three to four P M. And it'll be her and myself reading to the children, both in English and Spanish. There'll be some activities the library is going to be providing, and thanks to the generous donations of many businesses in town, including the Vice Mayor. We are going to be distributing a hundred books to bilingual books at to to these children after the event's over. There is a flyer for the event, which I will be sharing online and a link to the event, which I will be passing off to city manager and and Ms. Mendez. If they could share that as well, and I reached out to the elementary superintendent today, Ms. Lochion. And she is going to help us distribute some flyers at the school district as well. Hopefully, we can get a lot of participants from especially Hispanic children. So I'm hoping the weather holds up. Should be a great event for the community, and. I appreciate everybody involved in all the businesses out there, including you, Mister Vice Mayor, for your generous donation on that, so. With that, I'm going to wrap it up and adjourn the meeting for this evening at nine fifty seven P M. Everyone have a good evening. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.